Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for today, December 7th. Let me remind everybody to make sure that your microphones are turned on and to speak clearly into them. And also identify yourselves for the record when you are speaking. The next Planning Board meeting is currently scheduled for December 21st, 2021, at 7:00 in the Matthew Thornton Room. As soon as our Chair, Mr. Best, gets here, I will introduce him into the record. Nelson, I'm going to put you in a voting position in place of Ms. Lynn Christensen. Tim, what do you have for the Planning and zoning administrators' report?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Members of the Board, in your packet you should have memo dated November 24th from myself regarding two projects that are on tonight's agenda for regional impact determinations. They are the Extended Stay Hotel at 702 Daniel Webster Highway and the additional 96 units at Gilbert Crossing. Staff recommends that the Board determine these are not of regional impact as they do not meet the criteria that the Board has established.
Thank you, Tim. Do we hear motion?
I will so move.
Moved by Mr. Disco, seconded by Mr. Keenick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all upstanding, that's 4-0-0 to determine non-regional impact.
I will defer any other discussions under this item until we get to the end of the night under discussion of other actions to, in order to keep things moving.
Thank you, Tim. Moving on down the agenda, number three is the discussion of capital improvement program for the town of Merrimack. Paul, if you will, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. My name is Paul McKelley. I am the Town Manager for the town of Merrimack. I come before you tonight to discuss the capital improvement plan put forth by the town. I know that you have a packed agenda, so it's the pleasure of the Board. I can go through every item in gross detail, or I can just highlight what's new. This plan has been in front of you several times and several, over the years. Really, there isn't much new on the plan. It's a little bit of tweaking of where they lie in the out-years as we move forward within the planning process. So, I could do whatever the pleasure of the Board is. If you have specific questions on a project, I have my DPW Director, Kyle Fox, with me to answer specific questions if there are specific questions.
Thank you, Ms. McKelley. Not seeing any dissension if you want to just touch on the new things.
Okay. Really, there's only one new thing that is there this year, and that is the replacement of fuel tanks and piping island canopy for the DPW garage. I'm trying to get there. There it is. When we did the $3.3 million bond with the, for the new highway garage, we left the old gas tanks and we replaced the pumps. They are coming to their end of useful life. NHDS is strongly suggesting that this type of piping that we've used and installed be replaced sooner rather than later due to the deterioration that we see and because of where the pumps are placed. At the same time, it makes sense to replace the two 10,000 gallon tanks we have for diesel, one for diesel and one for unleaded. So, that project is on the, the new on the, this major CIP, and that project is out in years '23, '24. I'd like to touch upon one other project that we have, and that is the very first one that's been on the plan for a while, and it keeps on getting pushed. And unfortunately, I think it will be pushed again, is the safety complex. Understanding that that is definitely something that needs to be replaced. We are trying to find adequate spacing and land for the facility. So, unless we get a Hail Mary pass completed, I don't foresee this moving forward in '22, '23, but it'll probably be pushed out one more year to '23, '24. But I wanted the Board to note that. And then, one thing of other note is the sidewalk. We received TAP funding, I believe, or we're in the process of receiving TAP funding for a sidewalk to run along DW Highway down from basically Frasier Square down to Merrimack 360. And you'll see that on the plan as well. And that's really all that's new, new in the proposal for majors. And of course, there's some small stuff in wastewater. And basically, the only new thing there is the hydro feed system upgrade. And that is a placeholder in the very last year because we have to keep that in the front of our brain. We are completing a $22 million upgrade for the facility. So, in doing that, we have to look at what else we might need, and that's one of the things we got to just keep on the burner, so to speak, but that's in a very out-year.
Thank you, Mr. McKelley. Board members, any questions? Nelson, please.
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of comments. With regard to the item on sidewalks, which is item seven. It's shown for this coming year, an additional $200,000 to be put in. Right, that's, that's not in there yet, or that's your plan for next year?
When we wrote up the CIP, of course, we do the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan as a, as a planning document. And at that time, we were looking at putting $200,000 in for an additional sidewalk. We finished the Woodbury Street sidewalk. So, we were looking at doing an additional sidewalk, and the budget is not finalized. That will be finalized next Thursday, going in front of the Council. So, at that time, it might, may or may not happen. But we feel that since we're doing a large stressless sidewalk on DW Highway, that that also helps with the sidewalk plan that we have moving forward in the town.
Okay. I'd just point out that the Town Center Committee has recommended additional funds in the out-years for additional pieces of sidewalk in the Town Center.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear to everybody, but I wanted to clarify what this one was for. And, hi, Bob. The other was, the other question. Well, I think I could let the rest go for now. The bridge, the Sahigan River Footbridge is going to need some additional connectors if it's replaced. And that's a subject probably for another day. It has to do with how we connect into that footbridge when it's replaced.
Yeah, and then that replace, that replacement, it's not even in the 10-year schedule for the state yet?
No, it's a candidate, as I understand it, yeah.
Right, and with the new infrastructure bill and things going on, we sat on a call yesterday with Senator Sheen's office, and we still don't know how that money's going to get trickled down from the state to the community. So, that project could move forward, or that project could stay where it is. But right now, it's looking like they're trying to fund the 10-year plan that they have in place.
Good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Nelson. At this time, I want to bring back in our Chairman, Robert Best. Paul, it's all yours.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for the, starting the show without me, I apologize for being late. Sometimes traffic just doesn't cooperate.
No problem at all.
Proceed.
Basically, we opened it up for questions. I know you have a packed agenda, so I just tried to highlight some things real quick for you. And most of the items on it, to recap, are, been there year after year. We're just moving them in the right year that we feel that the project is going to happen.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Other questions by members of the Board?
I would just recommend that unlike our normal procedure where we hold off till the end of the night to do this, given the length of the agenda and the amount of time between when you're discussing this and when you'd be voting, I'd recommend the Board go through and assign your priorities now so that we can knock this right out and would not have to worry about it later in the evening.
I'm not sure, well, let's see what everybody else thinks of that. It seems like there is so many things on the agenda that we would delay by spending, you know, the time doing that. But what do you guys think? Whatever you want to do. Tackle it now, or tackle it at the end?
I'm inclined to put it to the end because of all the people who are here for other things.
You mean they're not all here for me?
No, I'm sorry.
Most of us are.
Yeah.
Darn.
Any, any other opinions, either way or another?
No, I see what Nelson's saying. We can push it to the end, just four.
Tom, do you?
It would probably be better to get it done just so that we don't end up having to push it off because we got to get this through, but, I mean, I'll do what the Board wants.
I'm trying to be sensitive to Paul's schedule with the Council as well.
I, yeah, I agree with that. I don't want somebody to not let us begin their agenda item because we reach 11:00 PM having spent, you know, 10 or 15 minutes early in the night doing this stuff.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay. Then, without further discussion, thank you, Paul.
Well, thank you.
We'll certainly have a follow-up for you in writing, and I'm sure I'll see you many times between now and the next year when you sit down here to do this.
Thank you, and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, you too, Paul.
Before he goes, before Paul goes, do you have the ratings from last year, the rankings? Are the?
I don't know.
I did not include them in the packet, but this spreadsheet that you have is, has a blank column, so we did not carry those forward.
But I just, okay.
What I, what I will do, in an interest of time, I will go back to my office. I'll get you last year's sheet so you can see where, and I'll bring that up for Tim, so at least you'll have the ratings from last year.
I appreciate that, Paul. Thank you for doing that.
That'd be very helpful.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay. The next item on our agenda is discussion of the capital improvement plan for Merrimack Village District. Someone here from MVD? Yeah, there we go. Hello, sir. Ron, I don't think your microphone's on. I don't think they can hear you. It should be really.
Ah, you got it.
Yeah, there you go.
It looked like it was, kind of had that glow to it, I thought. I am, my name is Ron Miner. I'm the Superintendent with the Merrimack Village District, and I'm here to present our capital improvement plan.
Please proceed.
Well, Ron's getting his stuff together. Just as a reminder, when we come to assigning our priorities, I'm going to have to be
Recused.
recusing myself, yeah, due to my position on the commission for MVD.
Okay. Makes sense.
Would you like me to start right at the top and just kind of work down?
Proceed however you wish.
All right. I'll just start with the projects and kind of go down through. First, on the, on the left side there is land purchase for potential well site. That is a, kind of a to-be-determined when it's going to happen. The next one down is potential new well site development, which we are in the process right now of doing some exploring. So, we're working on Wilson Hill Road at this, at this point. So, if that comes to fruition, that's where the potential purchase will, will fall. The new well treatment PFAS and/or iron and manganese, that's kind of a, just a placeholder right there. We are currently planning for fall of '22 and spring of '22 to have our well seven and eight online, which would be the spring. And well two and our new well nine in the fall with PFAS treatment on both of them. So, that's really just a placeholder if we find any new potential sites. The well three treatment plant is really on hold. That is, well nine is a direct replacement of well three that we're, that we've.
Those first four, are those all for the same well? I mean.
Different. So, Mitchell Woods is a, was a potential site that's still active. We're, we're not really ready to really pull the trigger on that one yet, but we're keeping it in the the possibilities. So, that it's, they're really just, it could go either way, or for both.
So, the first one says a land purchase for a potential new well. The second one says a potential new well site development. Effectively, they're, they're funded in the same year. Are they not the same well, or are they?
It's, that's really just a placeholder. That could move around. So, it just happened that we put them into the same year.
So, they're not the same well necessarily?
Not necessarily, no. I mean, but if we do find something, you know, Wilson Hill Road pans out, there would be some engineering first and then some development. So, that, that probably would move.
Okay. But the next two refer to whatever new well you put in, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I was just having trouble understanding.
Is the Wilson Hill Road site secret or something, or can we know where, I don't know where it is?
We, we're, it's not secret. It's been in public meetings. So, we, we're looking at 70 Wilson Hill?
70. Okay, I know about where that is, I think.
It's across the street from 69.
Oh, now I know.
On the right or the left as you go up Wilson Hill Road?
It is on the left. It's, it borders the river.
Okay.
And it's, I'm not, I, I'm not on Wilson Hill all, all the time, so I'm, I'm trying to think of a landmark.
Well, either the property formerly of Marle, Marle and, or formerly of Michael in that area? Well.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I got the idea. I just wanted to know where it is, and from, you know, planning point of view, it's kind of interesting to know.
It's about, it's about three-quarters of the way down Wilson Hill before the, before the town line. I guess that's.
You gave me a number. I'll work with that. Thank you.
If, if there was a well on Wilson Hill Road, would that bring water service to the rest of Wilson Hill Road?
Potentially, yeah. Yes.
I know there's some people that are on the high end of Wilson Hill Road that would be glad to know that.
Yes.
So, that would actually probably would need to add a line in here at some point for mainline extensions or to that, you know.
Yeah. Even if, even without extensions of mainlines, how would that interconnect with your system? Do you have any water service up where that well would go now?
No.
No, no. We have, the closest connection would be.
The Blood Road.
Blood Road. We don't go all the way down there to Blood Road, but we're on McQuestion Road.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. So, you were on, they're not numbered, but well number three treatment placeholder if well number nine is not finalized? Or were you past that one already?
No, it's, it's, it's actually being constructed with the well two treatment plant. It's, it's about 1,200 feet from well two. Same, pretty close water quality to well two, so the iron and manganese plant isn't needed. And we're hopeful that it's, it's, like I said, it's a direct replacement of three, and we're hopeful about 1,000 gallons a minute out of that well.
Where is well three?
Well three is right, it's next to Dunkin' Donuts on Continental Boulevard, across from Industrial Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Seven and eight PFAS treatment is, as I said before, it's in, it's in the works now. Where, where our vessels are in, the roof is sheathed, shingled. It's, it's getting closed up as we speak, and I believe they, this week, they chlorinated the vessels. And pretty soon, we'll have the media in.
Okay.
Well two, well two and three PFAS treatment plant, as I said before, it, three is, nine is going to be a direct replacement for well three. That is under construction as well right now. Masons are there doing the blockwork. And December 15th is when they're plan on shipping the vessels. So, we'll run along on that.
Okay.
Artificial recharge is something that we've been working on where we want to add to the supply of well four and five. So, when four and five got their, got its PFAS treatment in place, we designed that plant to 870 gallons a minute, which is what it's permanent for. We are currently, we can pump that well at 625 gallons a minute sustained yield out of it. We're right around 425. So, this would make that, give us some extra water, and it would be able to run through that plant.
What does that mean to artificially recharge the well?
It would, that would consist of a line into the Merrimack River, pumping it up, and then putting it into a retention basin that would actually recharge that aquifer. So, one of the drawbacks of that aquifer, it's a, I'm not a geologist by any, a hydrogeologist by any means, but it's, the soils are porous, and it doesn't recharge as fast as, as the other wells. So, it's, that, and that's where we have the, it was permanent for 870, like I said, but we can really only do like 625 without doing any damage.
So, the recharge is some structure that will hold water like a detention pond, and then it'll infiltrate into the ground?
Yep, yes.
Okay. And then there's some artificial pumping from the river into that detention pond?
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So, we, cost of service study with Penetech Water, that's actually going on right now. So, I'm going to, I'm going to back up. I'm going to actually jump ahead a little bit. We, we've done a master plan update and a water supply update. And, and to move forward on the Mitchell Woods, the Wilson Hill Road, if that comes to, into play, or artificial recharge to add to our supply, we did a cost of service study is, with Penetech to kind of help us decide what is the correct or most economical, economical way to go. So, once we get that study in, they're doing that study now. These other pieces of the puzzle will move around a little bit, and we'll adjust accordingly to which direction we want to move. Water model update, that is, so a lot of our modeling, underwater engineers does, and we're working off of an old model. So, this is just to update the software to be able to, I guess, expand it a little, the system a little bit more to, to, for modeling purposes for the system. Well level and monitoring SCADA GIS IT improvements. We don't, we have some money in this year to continue with that. It's been an ongoing program for us, and we've been working to develop our GIS. Part of the PFAS plants that we're, that we're building now will actually get a, once two is kind of getting to the point where we need to install the SCADA stuff, that will, we'll start that study, and we're going to plan on doing an upgrade for all of our locations. And I have, this is an area that's storage tanks, so then this Hutchinson. We did a tank coating and cleaning in 2018 on that one. So, there's really nothing planned for that. Parker Drive Tank. We, we want to do a, so it's, it says to be determined here. I need to get some pricing and do an inspection to plan out a blast and recoat for that, that tank. That hasn't been done in a while. Turkey Hill Tank. In 2021, we did some tank cleaning, dome repairs. We actually installed a mixer to have, improve the water quality in that tank. Route Three North improvements, you know, eliminate parallel mains and that is says, the source for that is private. So, as, as new development comes in, we're trying to include a lot of that work with requirements for coming into the system. Boost, Belmont Booster Station Pump Controls. Belmont Booster actually services as well Pheasant Run, and currently, there are no SCADA controls there. So, we, we visit that station daily. It's not a, it's not something if, if, if it does go down, it, it doesn't stop people from getting water up on Belmont Hill. It's really just a boost in better service on Belmont Hill. So, we want, we'd like to get some controls up there. SCADA controls. We really have no plans right now for loops or, sorry? Rate, rate update, possible cost of service evaluation relating to new developments in irrigation. We're going to, we're trying to do a rate update every, every couple of years just so we can stay on top of that and tweak where we need to. So, that's, there's 15,000 in there for 23 to, fiscal year 23 to do some of that. Equipment we have in here for this year, replacement of a 10-wheel dump truck. Or it's actually a 10-wheel dump truck to replace a six-wheeler that we have that's a 1989 International. I don't know the mileage on it right off the top of my head, but it's, it's old. I'm thinking about getting antique plates for it. We replaced our BACO last year. And the portable pressure high-service pump is kind of on hold. We, we need to figure out, it's been on hold for a while. That, what that would do is if there were, for any reason, that the Turkey Hill Booster was down, the Turkey Hill Booster actually services the high service in town, that we'd have a portable pump to continue the service in the event that being down. But I want to back up to, Mitchell Woods is in a high service, so, and I probably should go one step further. We actually have two, two zones in town. We have a high service and a regular pressure zone. And the only way that we can feed the high service is through the Turkey Hill Booster, which pumps into the high service. We do have redundant pumps in that station, so that it, it would really be if there was some kind of a water main break or something like that, that in the high service, it would limit us from pumping from the booster. But that, that's kind of been on hold because if, again, if Mitchell Woods comes on, that is in the high service, that could be a pump that we could turn on for a short period of time to boost, for that's high service. And then we have town coordination projects. There, I don't believe there's anything at this time, but we do keep money in our budget for any kind of a, if we have to move a water main or something like that, if, when a project does come up, that we do budget for. So, I think that's kind of all I have on the CIP. I don't know if there's any, any questions, or?
I've got a couple, just so I understand the chart that you've given us.
Okay.
So, the current fiscal year, the one that you're in, is FY '22, correct?
That is correct.
So, that's in progress. The orange or pink column there is next fiscal year.
Yes, that's what we're.
That's the things that are upcoming, and then obviously, things are in future years.
Yes.
Now, there's a green column that says ongoing, previous. Are those things also in FY '22, or are those some other time, or?
Yes, they are as well.
Okay.
Some of, some of those, so seven, like, for example, seven and eight is ongoing.
I got you.
Well two and three is as well.
So, on the 10-wheel dump truck, there's 175,000 as the total, and then 175,000 in FY '22? Is that just one truck that's showing in two columns because one's the total and one's the?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's one truck, okay. I understand. Is the rate update line for roughly fifteen thousand dollars every other year? Is that actually a capital expenditure or is that an operational expenditure?
More likely it's gonna be an operational. We just list it in here as part of the planning, so we, it doesn't get missed.
Okay, so the ones that we really need to comment on as a planning board are the ones in F Y twenty-twenty-three. And to the right, and the ones that actually have numbers in them, not all the T V Ds.
Correct.
Because we can't comment on those. Okay, I understand what I'm looking for now. Other comments or questions substantively about?
Yeah, I, I had similar confusion with this as to what we're being asked to approve tonight. And I have a similar question to yours, Bob, on the, on the, this item here, which is. Well level monitoring, the I T improvements for ten thousand dollars. Is that a capital expenditure? Is that something that's, should be in the C I P, a, a ten thousand dollar software update or am I reading it wrong?
That's probably gonna, again, that's probably gonna be budgeted, it's just in the. We put it in here just as a, kind of a placeholder for budgeting purposes, but that'll, that'll more likely be a budgeted item.
I would think if these software updates go on forever. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the, now that's three hundred thousand dollars each and the next two years after that, is that something different that's getting? Spent to make it really expensive the following year? Is, is, or is the first year preliminary kind of planning or something?
Those may come off, that was in there for the SCADA improvements. So that's probably gonna come off in the future years. We're, we're doing our SCADA improvement. Through the, the, along with the wells two and three and, and seven and eight.
Okay, gotcha. Other comments or questions? Nelson, you have others?
Well, I would just like to recommend that in the future, the water district work with the town. In developing this capital improvement plan, so that we, we're looking at capital improvements for the future.
Okay.
And the other part that's your budget is separately handled, okay? Because you're asking us to approve things that aren't really capital in this case.
So the total in twenty twenty-three. That's to be approved is seventy-five thousand dollars in capital. Assuming all the items on here belong in capital and then one point one million in twenty-four, is that right? Am I reading this correctly?
Yes.
And then it kind of goes up and down depending on whether it's a big year or not, most of them are in the six hundred thousand dollar range, obviously twenty-five has got a big jump because it's got a couple of big projects. Okay.
Well, so it begs the question, I guess, where does the one point one million come from? Is that including the six forty K at the bottom or is that? Which sounds more like budget numbers if it's just asset management on an annual basis, but.
Well, it's all the things in that column.
If you don't include it, but then the next one seems to include it, so I.
I may have missed that, I, I apologize.
It's got land purchases in there as well, Tom, that's, that whole column. Comes to the one point one.
Well, the four, four and the three comes to one point one and then the five hundred and the one forty. Would be an additional to the one point one, but that's.
Yeah.
Well.
And it looks to the right like you're including it in all those columns, so then you don't have anything above there anyway, so.
It was included before, I, and I actually just pulled them out, I tried to pull them out, so that it should total, if I did it correctly. The one point one should not include the five hundred or the one forty. Those are target contributions that, for capital reserves.
I don't know what that means.
So, in our rate, our rate, we, we've planned in. Seven, six hundred and forty thousand dollars to, to go into capital reserves within our rate. It's not in, it's not in the budget anymore, it used to be budget line. But we, we've taken that out, but we've, we've. In setting our rate, we, we account for the, the contributions into capital reserves. So it's there just as, as a target, what we're gonna need for future.
Okay, I understand that. It looks like in twenty-six and beyond, that's, those numbers, those, those targets. Ended up hitting the total line, but the first twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. It looks like for, there's probably just spreadsheet errors or something, just to get that included, but they're not added into the totals.
Right. So I kind of, where there wasn't really a whole lot of numbers in there, I just left them in. Like I said, it was included before and I, I adjusted up to twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Actually, it looks like it's in in twenty-two as well. Okay. I don't have any other questions about that piece, does anyone have any other questions about it? All right. I, I propose that we, like we did with the towns. Defer voting on the various criteria to the end of our meeting tonight, does that make sense to everybody? Yes, without objection. Thank you, Ron, for the presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do. I hope that some of these new sources and buying the properties and things come online. I know that everyone's anxious to have a more robust supply, so we can water lawns and stuff eventually.
We're, we're working on it, it's, it's been a, as you know, it's been a rough few years with, with everything going on with, with the P F A S and, and such, but.
Yeah, it absolutely has and, I didn't mean to overlook that, obviously, that's been a huge amount of the work on your plate and, and the whole. M V D's plate. To deal with all that's gone on with that, from the practical and the engineering to the arguments with D E S and, and Saint Gobain and all of that. Thank you for all the tremendous work that's gone into that, looking out for our best interest in town.
Thank you.
Without any other comment, item number five on our agenda is L and F Realty Trust. As the applicant's an owner. And it is continued review for consideration of a site plan amendment to modify site lighting. And add additional pavement and related improvements, the parcels located at three ninety-six Daniel Webster Highway. In the C two general commercial, R, R four residential, aquifer conservation and elderly housing overlay districts. It's tax map four D three, lot thirty-two, case planning board twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. And it's been continued from our July seventh and, and August seventeenth and September twenty-first and October nineteenth planning board meetings. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet, you'll find memo from Robert Price, giving an update as to where things stand. This is the site of Need Auto along D W Highway. This project was brought forth because of two site plan violations. One for constructing additional impervious surface without the site plan approval. And the other being addition of non-compliant floodlighting that was put on the site on some of the utility poles out there. The applicant has worked with the staff, particularly with Public Works Department and with Robert, to. Work through the various issues that remain. I think that we are very close now and ready to move forward with a conditional approval. There are a couple of waivers that are in the memo and in the packet, however, if the board determines that this is eligible for a waiver of full site plan review. You wouldn't necessarily need to address each of those waivers individually. We do note that Robert pointed out that there is an area of the auto storage in the back of the parking area. That does not meet the current lighting standards, it's not eliminated sufficiently based on the requirements of the regulations. We had a similar situation with R H Cars, down further south on D W Highway, if the board remembers. The board needs to determine whether or not you feel like the design as presented is acceptable. Or if they need to add some additional lighting for security purposes there. My lone editorial comment to that would be that since this site plan was brought forth as a result of a lighting complaint. We may not necessarily want to add additional lighting, plus, given the relative density of development in this area, this is a brighter section of. D W Highway than the area where R H Cars is down at the southern end of town. Secondly, the other item that Robert brought forth is that there's, appears to be an existing access between this and the gas station just to the south. We don't know if there's ever been appropriate easements established for that cross-access between the two lots. So we recommend that the board either have the applicant put together appropriate easement language or do something to close up that access. That does not have any recorded rights that we're able to find. Given all of that, again, we feel like the position of the applicant, application is that we should be ready for a conditional approval here this evening.
Thank you, Tim. Matt, good to see you again. Please introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Matt Peterson, Keach Norstrom Associates, again here representing the Need Auto. I think Tim just outlined everything we were at at the.
Microphone, Matt.
Sorry. I think Tim just outlawed everything that we kind of had talked about at the October fifteenth, if you recall, I was here on October fifteenth. And unbeknownst to me, my lighting guy did not do dark star, dark sky type lights, so. We had our floodlights that were not set to the town standards. We have modified those to all downcast wall packs now. And meet the standards and got those plans back to you guys. I also put a sidewalk on the frontage of this property here because unlike the aerial photo that you see there next to us, which just had white for the gas station. I didn't think they had a sidewalk, but if you drive down there, they do have a sidewalk, Nelson, and you were correct, so, which I shouldn't have second guessed you, but I understand. So, from the site plans that we presented back to you, just to give you a quick overview here, I know you've got a lot going on tonight. The area in the back here is what was added on for pavement. What we did is we looked at a drainage study. For the project to go ahead and. Whoops, that one goes there, sorry. So, a lot, you can see the slope at the top behind us here, all the water's draining down, what we did is the client there had paved this area up in here. So the water was continuing down to a leaching catch basin here and a leaching catch basin off-site here. We worked with D P W to propose a small sediment detention pond here with an overflow. All the numbers pre and post are the same or decreased and all them are relatively light. We're at a one C F S, one point five C F S, that type of stuff that's there. So there's not a lot of discharging off this property. I know there's one comment about the detention pond here as its overflow, emergency overflow right here. For the two-year storm, there's no flow coming out of it, for the ten-year storm, we got point two-two for the twenty-five-year storm, point five-seven C F S. Very minor flow that makes its way to this catch basin here. And again, the pre and post numbers are one point two-one, pre and post for a ten-year, and one point five-three for pre and post, so very minor runoff. And again, we're utilizing existing catch basins that are in this area. As for the lighting that was just talked about. The violation was out in front here, you know, if you've driven down there, there's still two more lights that are up there, there was three total, probably put in around the seventies or so, seventies or eighties. That cast light onto the site, I was dealing with the violation, we wanted, there's a lot of already kind of light in this area, just because of the commercial use there. Again, I think what Tim had said there, this was, I didn't think we were trying to make it brighter sight, I thought it was trying to go the opposite direction. My client was willing to do that, that's the pro, plan that's in front of you tonight. As Tim said, we asked for a full site plan waiver, you can see the plan in front of you is a lot more than you typically get on when you ask for that type of a waiver. But that's kind of a cleaner waiver than going through the C F I stuff and the different types of stuff in the luminaires. If the board's comfortable with that, I'd, I'd recommend the full site plan waiver instead of the two individual waivers that we had outlined there. We had gotten rid of the drainage ones, those are no longer there because Dawn said she would not be okay with an increase, so there's no more increase there from the stormwater. So really, the only thing we're asking for is the lighting. And then you can see the cut through that, this was just brought to my attention when I got this letter here, but there's a cut through right here. I went back to nineteen ninety-three plans, couldn't see it, I went till four, saw it, so I think they're probably right, it got put in at some point. I'll do a little research, work with staff, whether or not it has to be just loamed and seeded, or if there's an easement in place, that would be the final thing, that they put a note in the conditions, if you guys would be willing to do that. The sidewalk. Located up front here, I just brought it across the frontage of the property, it seemed to be the cleanest spot that's there, I don't know how that works, but I just heard with the C U P. And it sounded like there's a sidewalk coming from the diner down to three sixty potentially in that, but. Obviously, this section would have sidewalk built, so they wouldn't have to do it there in their capital improvement plan. I'm gonna keep it short, again, this has been going on for about a year with staff, we've been working with them, I've come to you guys a couple of times here and I know you got a full night ahead of you, so. I'll take any comments or questions you have at this point.
Thank you, the only comment I have is I want to make sure that our minute taker caught your name with the microphone off, so Matt Peterson.
Matt Peterson with Keach Norstrom.
With that, other guys on the board, comments, questions? Nelson?
Whenever. Okay, the first thing is for you, Tim, and it has to do with Robert Price's memo. And the way it's worded is kind of funny. But the second paragraph under background and project in description, rather, it's the third paragraph. And the third line in that. Paragraph says, the second line says that the board at the October nineteenth meeting. Has been determined to be an acceptable solution and a marked improvement over the original design. By Public Works Town Engineer Dawn Twamal. Well, I think there's a little.
Yeah, we, we got some bad cut and paste work.
Yeah, okay.
Essentially, what, what, where we are now is that Matt has revised the drainage, it meets the reapproval of Dawn. And everything is now to the satisfaction of staff.
I just suggest a correction on the wording of that, okay, for the record, this is gonna be part of the record. The other thing, it says the, the drainage memo was signed but not stamped. By a professional engineer, is that, that's just an oversight? That can be fixed, okay. No problem there. The other thing was whether you wanted cross easements for that driveway through or not. And is your neighbor okay with it? And if everybody's okay with it, I don't have a problem with it, but it, it.
It just needs to be formalized or discontinued, one or the other.
Yeah, okay, so your memo, your approval memo.
The recommendation is that it be addressed by the applicant, either through an easement or.
Okay, good.
Extinguishing the connection.
Okay.
Do you know what the use of that is? Is it?
My guess was, was to fill up cars back and forth between them, and if you look at the aerial up and down there too. There seems to be, that was kind of the deal with a lot of these lots, the four kind of that were in there, they seem to kind of have some cross easements that they must have worked through in the day, but. My guess would be just to get his vehicles to fill up with gas.
Seems like they are cross-access, I don't know if they have cross easements, I think that may be the problem.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just unpaved area where you could get a car through if you needed to? And that's what it's been used for? Applicant okay with the idea of fix it or forget it?
Yes.
Okay, one more thing. I'm not clear on what you've done about the lighting, this originally came out as a lighting problem. And it had to do with the lights that were installed on public service poles.
If I can just give a summary, the, the original complaint came from a resident on East Chamberlain, that those lights, when they were installed. Were shining brightly and directed out, not down, and they were shining into the backyards of the people on East Chamberlain.
Correct.
So what the applicant has now done is they are going to remove those P S N H installed lights. And replace them with wall packs along the building that are fully compliant with the town's regulations.
Okay, I didn't quite get that from what was said, that the wall packs were a replacement for those pole lights. I'm okay with it.
The applicant is not proposing any new freestanding pole lights in the parking area at all.
Yes, understood, and he's, they removed the ones that were offensive to the neighborhood, that's, I'm all set then.
Have they been removed already or is there a timeline for removal and is, what's the process by? I, I know that there's no certificate of occupancy.
He stops paying his lease for the lights, he pays for that light to be used, so, he, that's when that bulb went out, he had called and had them replaced and they put the new fluorescent lights and that's what blew up the world, so. He'll stop paying the lease and I'm sure they'll remove it from the pole.
Tim, from a regulatory standpoint, what triggers us knowing that the plan has been fulfilled?
We won't be signing off, the plan, planning board will not be asked to sign the plan until all the, those lights will be removed before. I would, I would make that recommendation to be one of the general conditions of the approval.
I, I like that approach, I don't know how they do the work.
I take it, I take it back, it's, it's, it would be a general condition, not a precedent condition, so it would be something we would inspect after.
Okay, that makes more sense, yeah, they can't do the work if we don't sign it. I got you, I'm happy. Other comments or questions?
One sec.
Board members, it looks like from the memo, we've accepted this already, we can consider these waivers or the waiver of full site plan review. And the two that are related to drainage, the staff has indicated in the memo that they're no longer necessary, the applicant seems to confirm that fact. What is the will of the board with respect? What is the will of the board with respect to either waivers three and four, or waiver five, which would subsume three and four?
Which, and five would be the-
The waiver of full site plan.
Full site plan review.
Which I would say, given the fact, it's, this isn't truly a full-blown site plan, it's kind of a partial. So, I would be comfortable if you waived the full site plan in this situation.
I would, too, and I would so move, Mr. Chairman, if that's the pleasure of you.
Nelson moves to waive full site plan review. Is there a second?
A second?
Second. Any further discussion?
Reason, which other criteria?
Which of the statutory criteria?
Unnecessary hardship to the-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll, oh, yes.
Just a point of fact, you said that he stopped paying the lease on the lights. Can he be a little more proactive than just waiting for them to notice he stopped paying the lease and take it down? Like, can he call ever source and-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just instead of just waiting for-
He can't take them down himself.
No, I understand that, just instead of waiting for them to realize that they haven't received money from him, say, six months down the road.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Good point.
Is there a point where they stop being energized?
Yeah, I mean, we want to get them removed off, so, yes, we'll, I mean, one of the conditions should be reach out to PSNH and have those shut off.
Whoever makes the motion when we get the conditional final approval, I would suggest adding condition regarding the removal of the pole-mounted lights as a condition prior to occupancy, or the renewed occupancy permit for the facility.
Within six months or something like that, or?
However, it's, if you want to put in a timeline, I'm fine with that.
I would like six months, just to get through a couple of months here in winter to get everything ordered to put up, because it's going to be dark pretty quick.
Six months from plan signing would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I think that makes, I mean, I don't want to give anybody such a tight timeframe that it binds them up, but I also want there to be an endpoint.
I thought you said plan signing wouldn't be until after the lights were off.
I amended that because I realized that we wouldn't have a mechanism to allow that to take place until we have a signed site plan. You're not supposed to be doing the work before you have the signed plan.
Okay. Further discussion on waiver of slot plan review, not all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstaining? Five zero zero to grant a waiver of full site plan review. Have we dealt with the public hearing on this one already, Tim?
Yes, but I'd still recommend opening again.
Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, either final discussion or final disposition, up to you.
Go ahead.
Neil?
No, I'm fine with the, I'm fine with the wait.
Okay.
Wait, sorry.
Nelson?
Oh, I was gonna make a motion to approve the plan with the conditions as specified, plus the conditions we've just added here. I couldn't remember what they all were.
General condition of approval regarding removal of lights within six months of plan signing.
Right, okay.
Got it. Is there a second for Nelson's motion? Second by Paul. Further discussion?
Well, so I'm wondering if six months makes sense, if the whole purpose of bringing this forward is to get those lights off.
Yeah.
I mean, it, six months sounds like a long time if people are already complaining about the lights to wait for them to get removed. Could it be four or something like that, just to-
It's completely discretionary at the boards at this point. The sooner the better, because it allows me to close a enforcement file.
Can't it just be a matter of a phone call to say, hey, come turn the lights off?
Well, they probably have to schedule it, but-
Well, to take them down, but to turn it off.
One would assume they're gonna do that, and that it shouldn't take more than a month or so to get it done, but, excuse me, in my opinion, but then-
Yeah, well, I think that there's two elements that have to occur simultaneously. First, we've got to get to plan signing, then we've got to put up wall packs and pull down the PSNH signs so that we don't sort of have dark periods in the middle of all of that. I don't, whatever you guys think is the right timeframe is fine with me.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but the six months would be from now was what you were looking for?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So, plan signing could be any time between now and six months from now. So, if you want to reduce the time from plan signing, two months probably is, I would think.
Right.
Two months?
So, February first?
Sixty days.
February 50th?
From plan signing.
Sixty days from plan signing.
Sixty days from plan signing. Nelson, are you okay amending your motion to that effect?
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with that, yeah.
Paul, you had the second, you're okay with that? Okay, so now it's two months from plan signing, sixty days. Further discussion?
No, I'm good.
Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Five zero zero. Thank you, Matt, and thank you to the applicant for working through a long process to come into compliance. Okay, item six on our agenda is TC Boston Development, Inc. as the applicant, and Reichel Corporation, Inc. as the owner. Consideration of waivers to a conditionally approved site plan to waive the requirements from sections 3, 12D, 2, Roman numeral 2, 9, Building Design Standards for Facades, and 415, Building Renderings of the Site Plan Regulations. The parcels located at 50 Robert Milligan Parkway in the I-1 Industrial and Off-Rear Conservation Districts, Tax Map 2D, Lot 78, Case Planning Board 2021-32. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. As you recall, this plan was conditionally approved by the board back in September for a 323,750 square foot warehouse distribution facility at the end of Robert Milligan Parkway in the current oddly excavation site. At that time, the planning board voted to deny a request for a waiver for the architectural design renderings. The applicant has put together a, an exhibit indicating what would, the building design would look like should those requirements be implemented as written in the regulations. Back in October, Robert mentioned to the board and asked for a general consensus as to whether or not the board would be willing to revisit a waiver request based on the strict application of the regulations. The board indicated that they would be. So, to that end, the applicant is here tonight to present some slightly revised building design renderings for the facade of the building that would not comply with the regulations, but hopefully gets closer to some of the architectural treatment that the board was looking for, given the large face of that building that will be facing Effie Everett Turnpike. I would remind the board that in addition, in their conditions of approval for this project, we had added a compliance hearing because of this particular issue, and I would like to ask the board that they consider this hearing here tonight to be that compliance hearing, so that the board is amenable to the waiver and does grant it, that we wouldn't have to hold another public hearing to sign the plan in the future.
Okay, thank you for the introduction, Tim. Please introduce yourself and then proceed.
Good evening. Austin Turner with Bowler. As Tim mentioned, we were here and received a conditional approval in September, at which point the board had, as part of our initial review of the architecture, chosen not to grant our waiver request for what falls under Site Plan Review 3.12. D. Point two dash, or Point II, and also related to Site Plan Review 4.15. The, the first one, and kind of the really relevant one, was the one that talks about articulation along the sides of the building, and it references that the articulation has to be at least 10% or the depth has to be at least 10% of the width of the entire facade, and extending for at least 20% of the length of the building. So, what we did, we put together a quick graphic to show what that would actually look like in the context of this particular building. So, the blue outline is the outline of what the building shape would look like with literal interpretation of those dimensions that I just referenced. So, you have a building length that's approximately 925 feet along the, running left or right across the screen, and then vertically on the screen, the length or the depth of the building is approximately 350 feet. So, when you apply the 10% rule, you get an indentation that's 92 and a half feet deep by 185 feet wide, and then also has these 50-foot gaps, which is what the regulations require, that you have to have them every 50 feet. So, I don't think this was the way this item was intended to read, and it essentially reduces the building over 50% of the square footage when literally interpreted. So, what we're respectfully asking is for the board to reconsider our waiver request. And in consideration of that, what we've contemplated, what we had the applicant put together, is just a couple of additional renderings to give you some sense of what we are proposing. We could tinker with the colors, but what we've essentially done here is introduced, and I can perhaps zoom in here a little bit to give this a little more context. What we've essentially done is added panels which have some, I guess, if you want to call it vertical relief along the sides of the building, that are banded, have color and different texture and materials to provide some of that, that break along the building that's not 182 feet wide and 93 feet deep. In addition to that, what's kind of shown on here, too, is there's a lot of landscaping that we've incorporated. It's part of what, what's conditionally approved along this frontage as well. And the idea of that was the existing and some of the mature vegetation that's along the turnpike, in some instances deciduous, and also has a bit higher canopy. So, what we have done, we have a pretty robust landscaping plan, it's part of the originally approved plans along this frontage. And it's our opinion, and I know I'm not objective, but the combination of this improved architecture with that landscaping meets the spirit and intent of what that Site Plan Review Regulation item was intended to achieve. And I would very much appreciate the board's input and feedback in that regard.
Thank you. What's the board's discussion, questions, comments? Nelson, go ahead.
Oh, well, I was gonna say, I don't think, I think this is the first time we've run into this kind of a problem with that regulation, which we adopted a couple of years ago. I don't think we've had a case to apply it to.
Yeah, what, what happened with this section of the Site Plan Regulations is that when we reorganized and rewrote the Site Plan regs, I kept in the architectural design districts and standards that were in the previous regulations. So, we didn't spend a lot of time looking at the meat and potatoes because it was existing ordinance, regulation language. And I think this highlights that we definitely should.
We should have, and I would like to add it to the tickler file or wherever you have it, we revisit this. But I personally have, I think, I'm, I'm very happy with the proposed solution in this case for this building, and I'm willing to, to approve a waiver, in this case, to allow this kind of a thing to happen in this particular case.
My own comment and observation with the way the regulations were, I think I've only seen this before applied in buildings that are somewhere between 100 and 200 feet, where you're talking about a 10 to 15-foot recess. And for that reason, I don't think there's anything wrong with the application of the regulation on smaller buildings, but obviously, on a 920-foot building where you've got a 92-foot inset, it's much more dramatic. But that's the perfect opportunity to use a waiver, in an appropriate case, as a circuit breaker, for an odd result. Tom, you look like you had something on your mind.
So, I'm wondering how much depth you have put in there when you did do that relief. Is that like a foot, or is that-
It's a, it's a couple of feet, and what they're essentially doing is taking another panel of the building, and they're adding it to the front of the building, so you get some depth. It's probably, might be 15 or 18 inches. It's hard to tell, I can get some clarity from the architect, but this, it's the thickness of this panel, and it's probably 15 to 18 inches along that, the front of that building, and it's-
I mean, I can't tell either, and I didn't want it to be six inches. It needs to be enough so that you do get a sense of a visual relief, and-
Certainly, and provided the board approved the waiver request, what I could do is, I could provide some additional information on the intended architecture through, through Tim to the planning board.
I don't have the landscape plan here, and I think I wasn't present at the meeting where this was approved, but the hardwood trees that are there planted along the front of it certainly are attractive enough, but those are not mature as they're in that, in that graphic there. Do you recall what kind of trees those are and what their mature height will be?
I can, let me just pop, I probably have them right on here, if you want me to give me a second. If I pop my drive back up.
Yeah.
I have all the files again. Does anyone have any other comments or questions while he's digging through his files?
So, you're saying the trees in that picture were not mature?
They don't look mature to me, maybe they are.
No, they don't, but I mean, they're not gonna be able to get too much bigger without interfering with the building and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, that, that was kind of the sense of what I wanted to figure out, was how much of the building's facade will be screened?
Right up next to the building, yeah. But I was thinking when it's first built, that that one stripe across the top is nice, but it's still way up there on a tall building, and so it doesn't, it does look like a big blank wall-
Yeah.
-without the trees there.
Now, are you guys talking about putting these, the panel relief on all four sides, or just the highway-facing side?
We were contemplating on the sides of the most prominent, which would be, well, I can use this plank, because we're conveniently landed on the landscape line. The original thinking would be along this front, because you're gonna see it as you come in, and you're, it's perhaps visible as you're heading southbound on the Effie Everett Turnpike. Obviously, the long side that faces the building, because it's most prominent, and then wrapping along this side as well, because you may have some visibility as you're heading northbound on that side of the building.
So, the treatment will be done on three sides?
That's what we were contemplating.
Which would make sense with the loading docks being the back portion.
Correct, the loading docks have a different feel anyway, but-
Well, and you're up against the granite face and-
Brick wall, granite wall.
Nobody's gonna see anything from there.
Did you say two or three? I thought you had asked for two, but-
Three, we didn't anticipate doing this, this architecture on the three sides of the building, both essentially what I'm calling the front on the Effie Everett Turnpike and then left and right side of the building.
You are, okay, I just wanted to be clear, thank you.
But your pictures don't show it on the ends.
Well, correct, well, what we're, well, this does show, it's kind of hidden behind the trees.
Well, it shows that front door, but if you go further down that wall, it doesn't show any relief.
On this side here?
Yeah.
I think it's just kind of hidden behind this, this tree. The intent is that that panelization's gonna occur on that side of the building as well.
Okay.
Let's see, so what we, looking at just the trees here. So, we have a combination of evergreens at, at planting height, or at planting. The evergreens will be approximately six to seven feet tall, and then the deciduous trees would be two to three-inch caliper. So, that's probably-
Three and a half feet, roughly.
What's that?
About three feet, roughly, I think.
Well, I think deciduous trees, you know-
They go by caliper, but I, I would estimate they'd probably be waist-high on most people, but planting maybe is slightly bigger.
Trees I planted this year that were about three inches.
What were the varieties of the trees, though?
They were-
The deciduous ones, not the evergreens?
Yep, so they're red maple, sugar maple, red oak.
Okay, so that could get to 35, 38 feet height, eventually, which is roughly the height of your building?
I don't think that'll be tomorrow.
No, no, obviously, obviously not, but quicker than you think. No, it won't be 30 years, but go ahead with the explanations.
No, I think, then the evergreens were, be about seven feet at planting, six to seven feet at planting. You can see it right in the table there.
I got you. Other comments or questions? None? Tim, this is an amendment?
This is simply a waiver request to the already-approved plan. What we would recommend here is that if you're going to grant, you grant the two waivers, and that you maintain the existing general and subsequent conditions from the currently conditionally-approved site plan, and that this be considered the compliance hearing for purposes of the architectural design.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that. Okay, so we don't have to deal with completeness. Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, board members, are you amenable to waiving the two standards requested and considering this to be a compliance hearing?
Yes, I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
As a, as a motion to-
It's a move to, yeah, to-
To waive based on-
Grant the waivers requested and to consider this the compliance hearing.
With the justification being-
Specific circumstances?
Specific, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense with this circumstance being the proximity to the highway and all of that.
Yeah.
Is there a second for Nelson's motion?
Second.
Second by Counsel Koenig. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstaining? Five zero zero. Tim, is there any other business that we need to do with this one? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and what I'll do is I'll just get the panel depth that we were expecting. I'll send that through Tim, so they can communicate that to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin, okay. So, we are up to item seven, which is RCA Holdings LLC. As the applicant and owner, consideration of a waiver to an approved site plan to waive the requirements of 6.01. C. of the Site Plan Regulations, which require all onsite improvements to be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And the intent is to allow for final paving improvements to be bonded instead of completed prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The parcel is located at 4 Benning Court in the I-1 Industrial and Off-Rear Conservation Districts, Tax Map 2E, Lot 62, Case Planning Board 2021-8. Tim, you want to introduce the site?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In the pack, you'll find a memo from Casey Wolf regarding this project. As you know, this was a site plan for the self-storage facility as part of the Edgebrook Heights Mixed Use- Heights mixed-use development in the southern part of town. Per the requirements of our regulations, in order for the Community Development Department staff to sign off on a certificate of occupancy, Section 6.01(c) requires that all onsite improvements be completed and inspected before we sign off. And we do not allow bonding for any unfinished items other than landscaping per the requirements of the regulations. So anytime an applicant is not able to do anything other than landscaping due to weather conditions, if they do wish to seek occupancy prior to those things being completed, it does require a waiver from the regulations, which can only be granted by the planning board. So the applicant is here tonight proposing to provide a financial guarantee for that final wearing course of pavement to be done on the site when weather conditions so permit and in doing so would submit a bond estimate to the Public Works Department and Community Development Department for the amount that would be necessary to do that, place the money in escrow or provide a letter of credit, which we would hold until those improvements are done. In addition to the waiver, we recommend five general conditions of approval that are outlined in the memo, that the general and subsequent conditions from the original amended site plan remain in effect. The applicant provide the cost estimate for the improvements, following the approval of the amount necessary to place the letter of credit or cash deposited into escrow, to complete the wearing course of pavement within six months of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And then lastly, that the financial guarantee for the construction will not be released or returned until satisfactory completion of the wearing course and written confirmation from the Community Development Department that the funds can be released.
Thank you for the introduction, Tim. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at.
Hi, Jason Lopez, Keach Nordstrom Associates. And with me is Gordon Welch, owner and applicant, RCA Holdings LLC. Tim pretty much covered most of it right there. So, start of construction, we went through this plan through last winter into the spring. We are seeking a waiver to defer the paving, final wearing course of paving until spring. So under, site, site construction did start this summer. Little late, but we started, plan was signed on July 20th. July 29th, we held the pre-con meeting and August 5th started construction. Went through, all the foundations are in, all the site work is complete except for the landscaping and wearing course of pavement. You know, weather has caught up. So we are seeking the waiver in accordance with RSA 67444. We do believe that strict conformity would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. We did talk about in the approval process phasing, he is on track with the phasing. We have a few buildings left to complete. Those will be determined as market conditions dictate. The nursery stock currently is very low to nonexistent. The landscapers recommended to defer landscaping until spring. Pavement, ground temperature is getting a little cold to make sure we get good bonding. You know, pavement contractors are also still doing a little work out there, but recommended again defer till spring. He's got a little more construction going on some of the buildings, so another benefit of deferring that wearing course is any mishaps that may happen to the pavement during construction, gouging of the pavement or whatever can be fixed and wearing course will cover that up. We'll get pavement markings in place and those will need to be, again, relined once the final wearing course is down.
Thank you, Jason. Tim, I have a technical question.
Sure.
There is a bond estimate in this package? Are we setting a bond amount tonight?
No, that would be something done by the department.
So we don't have any role in setting the bond amount?
Nope.
Good, don't want it. You, your conditions of approval gives them six months from, what, tonight to?
It would be six months from the time the CO gets issued to complete the improvements.
Okay. And then they could get the CO as soon as their buildings are done minus the paving and minus the landscaping?
Correct, the landscaping and paving, once those bond is, once the bond is in place for those, we would be able to sign off, assuming that all other improvements are completed.
Okay, makes sense to me. Jason, remind me of the phasing. Which buildings are built and which buildings are deferred till later?
Yep. The office is built and A through E, which are all the, all the buildings to the south and the one building to the north.
Got it.
Furthest to the east.
Okay. The footprints of F, G, and H, are those paved over or is that left dirt?
Nope, foundations are in.
Foundations are in, so it's concrete pad or something.
So in the future, vertical construction only.
All the binder is down for the entire site.
Okay, I got you. I don't have any other questions. Other members of the board, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Please, sir, come to that microphone right there, right next to you, introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like us to know. Right there, there, sir. One row behind you.
Hi, my name is Bill Fallon and I live across the street.
Address?
And my daily walks to Duncan Downs, for the last year I've watched them build this. And the amount of work that they did for the drainage and, and everything that they've done, you know, is top-notch. Their pavement that they have now, their rough pavement, is better than the million dollars we spent on our roads. So I'd just like to support them and, and as, as in the butter and I'd like to see them get in business.
Thank you very much. Can you share your address with us so we know which?
12 Merrimack Drive.
12 Merrimack Drive, thank you very much. Are there any other citizens or abutters who wish to weigh in? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Planning board members, what's before us is a waiver of the regulations set forth in the memo to allow bonding of the pavement in addition to the bonding of landscaping, which is already permitted without our approval. What's the will of the board?
I have a question. So are we talking about just the area where the self-storage is or are we talking about the whole, the whole site?
Just the self-storage.
Just the self-storage, okay.
Nelson?
I was gonna make a motion to.
Please do. Please proceed.
Oh, okay. Make a motion to approve the waiver request with the conditions as specified by Tim and.
As a result of hardship for the applicant?
Yeah. Imposing the, these requirements at this time of year would impose a hardship on the developer.
Okay, is there a second for Nelson's motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Second by Neil. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 500. You are all set. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Okay. Next item on our agenda is item number eight, which is 526 DW Highway LLC. As the applicant and owner, consideration of a waiver to an approved site plan to waive the requirements of, did I do that one?
Nope, the same, same waiver.
6.01(c) of the site plan regulations, which requires all site improvements to be completed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, to allow for the sidewalk improvements to be bonded instead of completed prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The parcel is located at 526 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 5D2, Lot 1, Case Planning Board 2019-26. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your pack, you'll have a memo from myself dated November 29th. Similar request here, Section 601(c) requires that all improvements be completed other than landscaping for the purposes of a certificate of occupancy. This project goes back originally, conditionally approved by the board in 2018, then amended back in 2019 and it was signed by the board in 2020. The construction commenced in July of this year. The new building is nearing completion and the applicant is requesting the board to consider allowing the sidewalk to not be constructed prior to the complete, to allow the CO with the sidewalk being bonded. It's a similar situation. The one thing I would say regarding this is if the board does feel that you wish to move forward with this, I would like to note that as of right now, there appear to be several onsite construction issues that still need to be done, which given the time of year and winter conditions, I'm not sure how the paving onsite may get completed. So if for whatever reason the applicant is not able to complete the construction during this winter season and get the onsite improvements done, I would not recommend that the sidewalk be bonded if it's going to be done in the spring for occupancy permit purposes. So if things need to be deferred and they can't get an occupancy permit this winter, if we are in the spring, if you can do the onsite paving, you should be able to do the sidewalk at that time.
So if we have to wait till spring for the other stuff, we wait for the spring for the sidewalk?
Correct.
All right, gotcha. Thank you for that. Okay, please introduce yourself and tell us what's going on.
My name is Eric Mitchell. My office had prepared the original site plans for the project and with me is Charlie Morgan, who's the principal of 526 DW LLC and Morgan Storage. As Tim has indicated, we are here for a waiver for the, not to pave the proposed sidewalk. If board members may remember that there is an existing sidewalk that is marked that goes along the edge of the, along the frontage on the parking lot that goes from south to the north. But because of the, the weather and the time of year, we're asking for a waiver to put the sidewalk in and pave it in whatever timeframe the board has. I know a six months timeframe is something that was talked about and that's fine with the, with the applicant. To let you know about the conditions for approval, it does state that strict conformance will pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and that the waiver would not be contrary to the public spirit and intent of the regulation. We've had construction delays that haven't made a problem this year and do not allow the occupancy of the finished building would be an unnecessary hardship to the owner. And it would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations because winter use of the sidewalk would be limited and access across the front of the existing pavement is allowed by the owner. Or specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land on the site plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. The waiver would be financially guaranteed and the sidewalk would be built. That the sidewalk would be built. The winter setting in, the sidewalk will not likely be completed before spring and the building is nearing completion. The sidewalk would get a limited use during the winter months and the pedestrian access is still available across the paved front of the property. So basically we're asking for a waiver to not put in the sidewalk now, but it would be bonded. We have seen the conditions of approval relative to bonding and placement of the bond and that, and we're in agreement with those. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, and good to see you again. The question that I have is relates to Tim's comments about other things going on with the building and the site that might otherwise delay a CO for the building. Are you guys gonna be able to get everything done other than the sidewalk that you need to get done during the winter?
Charlie can speak to that if you.
Yes.
Yes, easy enough, quick answer.
Paving was completed three hours ago. Done, finished.
There you go, check that box, right? Tim, was there anything other than paving that needed to get done?
I honestly, we, we would go out and do an inspection like we would for any other site to ensure that all the improvements on the plan are done.
Was that, was that basically what we were concerned about?
It was making sure that given the winter conditions that we had good pavement and that was, as of this morning, there was no pavement out there around the perimeter of the building, so that was why I brought the issue up.
Paving's completed. The only thing that's not completed, which will be done next week, is the, the reclaimed fire lane that goes around the building. That, that's not Batumina's concrete. And that, that'll be done next week. So I fully anticipate within three weeks, the four weeks, that I'll be ready to rock and roll.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay. Any other comments or questions from members of the board? Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Hearing none, what's the will of the board? Nelson?
I just want to be sure that Tim's comfortable with this, that there are other, there are no other things that need to be bonded here except the sidewalks. They've asked for sidewalks and.
That's all that's been requested, so if this, if the board grants this waiver and there are other things on site that are deemed not to be complete, we would not sign off on the CO.
You would not sign off on the CO?
My department won't sign off on the CO sheet until all the requirements per the plan, the approved plan and whatever waivers are granted by the board have been completed.
That's what I wanted to be sure of, yeah.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question, just what is the reason that you can't put a sidewalk in right now?
Winter conditions.
Winter conditions, it's.
We're coming into the winter.
Right.
Right now, I couldn't get to it.
And so.
Granite rubbing is a problem.
You can't dig up a sidewalk in, in the winter?
What's that?
I just, I guess I don't understand because I've seen road construction happen throughout the winter and generally.
I'm surprised they got the asphalt on the.
I am as well. Let me answer, let me answer the question, okay?
Yeah, maybe with the asphalt, I guess I can understand that because of the.
Generally you need.
Let me answer the question, okay?
Sure.
I've been around here for about eight or nine years. I think that everybody can concur that I have provided an excellent product for this, for the town. The building is, the buildings that I've built are really top shelf.
There's no question, yeah.
Top shelf builder, builder, and I don't want to be fooling around with, with frost and so forth when I don't have to. Okay, let, let's put the sidewalk in and let's get it right. Let's get the, all the landscaping in there right. Let's get the drainage in there right. Don't force my hand to try and put it in now, it makes no sense.
Okay, sure, that's a, that's an answer.
That's what?
I said, that's an answer, yeah. I was, I was just curious as to why you can't do construction like a sidewalk.
Well, you could do, okay, you could, but, okay, but it's not gonna be right.
Okay.
Okay, things move, frost. When you're dealing with frost and cold and snow, things move.
Generally speaking, from an engineering standpoint, it's my understanding you want temperatures 40 degrees and rising in order to do pavement properly.
Pavement, yeah, okay.
I understand, Mr. Morgan, the frustration that you feel, but be patient with us, we'll get to the decision here.
Well, I'd like to make one comment, okay? I mean, this is not Microsoft buying, you know, IBM, okay? I think that if you could amend the regulations to allow staff to work with me on something like this, because this is not a big deal, it would save a lot of time, it saves his time, your time, my time, and it just adds more expense to the project. I don't think that's necessary. I know that every deal is a little bit different, but if they had some latitude, okay, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Well, I think we wouldn't be here tonight as if you were to just put the sidewalk in in the, in the first place.
Okay. Talking of school, okay. Good.
You're right.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's.
I'm just saying.
All right, all right, we don't have to do the back and forth, we can just decide what we want to do with our waiver. What is the will of the board or is there further discussion? Nelson?
No further discussion. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to grant the waiver to allow the sidewalk to be bonded and, because of unnecessary hardship, I think it'd be an unnecessary hardship and other difficulties to try and put it in now as Mr., as he's formed it out.
Strict conformance.
Yeah, strict conformance would be.
Would pose an unnecessary hardship.
Unnecessary hardship on him and on the town.
With the conditions per the memo?
Oh, I agree with that. Nelson, is there a second for Nelson's motion?
I just wanted to clarify that also includes the conditions per the memo, correct?
Yes, it did.
Yes, the conditions in the memo, yes. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll.
Second by Paul.
Paul, got it.
I, I, yeah, I agree with the motion, I support it. I agree with what Mr. Morgan had said with his site being a dramatic improvement. I can still remember the red and white former Xylas site with the roof falling in and a blue tarp over it when this all started and I, I know that his site is mostly a storage type warehouse use, but it's a fabulous looking site compared to what it used to be. The buildings do blend in, the landscaping. Beyond that, I think that Mr. Morgan has been tremendously supportive of the community in allowing events to occur on his site. Rotary Club has done some things there and car shows and Boy Scouts and things like that. And I definitely want to echo and offer some credit for those kinds of things.
Thank you very much.
I think they deserve it.
It means a lot.
With that in mind, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero, you're all set.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Eric, as well. I hope you're doing some barbecue competitions still.
And if Charlie hadn't developed the site, I may be going to Xylas for one of their auctions to get all my Christmas stuff. But that's, that's gone.
That's right. Those things are a bygone era.
I might add, there's about a hundred and twenty-five on a waiting list to get into that building.
I believe it. I believe it.
So, I want to keep the fogs of Palmer's calling.
Me too. Me too. Okay, item nine on our agenda, Merrimack Parcel A LLC and Merrimack Parcel A LLC and Slate Merri, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. Merrimack Parcel A LLC is the applicant and Merrimack Parcel A LLC and Slate Merrimack Acquisition LLC is the owners. Consideration of an amendment to a previously approved site plan to add a phasing plan allowing the development of the site to be completed in phases for purposes of occupancy permitting. The parcels located at ten Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map three C, lots one ninety-one dash two and one ninety-one dash two U one dash U two U four, case planning board twenty twenty-one dash forty-three.
Chairman, members of the board, in your packet you'll find an email from Thomas J. Leonard, the attorney for the applicant, requesting continuance to December twenty-first. They do need to make some revisions to the application before it would be ready for the board to consider.
Thank you. Go on forward.
There's nobody here?
Nope, nobody here. I'm sorry. Sorry, Tim. I'm spaced out.
Yes.
What's the will of the board with respect to the request for continuance?
Chairman, I'll move, I'll move we continue to the twenty-first of December. If that's, let me ask staff about that before...
That was our suggestion that you do two weeks because the revisions needed are relatively minor. In fact, they probably are already done. We just, two weeks was all they needed for this.
Okay, and you have no problem with the fact that it's the twenty-first of December?
Nope.
Okay. Then in that case, I'll move that we...
Thank you, Nelson. We'll be here the twenty-first of December either way.
I guess we will.
Is there a second for Nelson's motion to continue?
If you bring cookies, will...
I can't put more work on my wife than do that. Who's got a second for this motion?
I'll second.
Neil has the second for the motion. Further discussion?
So you have to make sure you don't, you don't need to send out further notice?
Yeah, there will be no further, the notice is the announcement tonight that this is continued to that date.
Yeah. Yeah, let's make that clear. It's a motion to continue with no further notice to a butters. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero. That completes number nine on our agenda. It's not bad. Chris Ross is the applicant and seven oh two Daniel Webster Highway LLC is the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a forty-two suite extended stay hotel and associated site improvements. The parcels located at seven oh two DW Highway in the C-two General Commercial District, tax map seven E, lot twenty-three dash one, case planning board twenty twenty-one dash forty. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you'll find in the packet, there's a memo dated December third for myself regarding this project. This project is the site that's adjacent to the Merrimack Ten Pin to the south, the undeveloped portion of the Maplewood condos and then the flat lay piece that is conditionally approved for the flexible industrial across the street. This lot was clear cut some time ago and then a twenty nineteen conceptual plan was presented to the board, which never went anywhere. The current proposal, as described by the applicant, calls for about a forty-two thousand square foot four-story extended stay hotel with forty-two suites. We do have questions regarding the classification of this use, given the similar project that the applicant had done at four oh one DW Highway, which was considered multifamily residential for transitory temporary housing. We've, in your packet, there's a series of emails between the applicant and Robert Price where Robert asked some questions regarding the operational aspect of the site and how this project was going to be moving forward. We don't feel we have a satisfactory answer yet to determine specifically that this is an extended stay hotel and not multifamily residential. So what we'd like to have the board do tonight is have that discussion with the applicant so that we have the board's input and feedback so that we can make an appropriate determination as to what the use here is. If it is determined that this is multifamily residential, this would require a special exception from the zoning board and then probably variances for density and potentially other dimensional requirements. The project just did get peer review comments. They came late Friday after the office was closed. There aren't any significant comments other than the questions regarding use, which the peer review took into consideration in their review. Given where we stand with the use and having the opportunity for the applicant to look at the peer review and the comments that we have so far, it's our recommendation that we have the discussion regarding the use here tonight and then continue both the acceptance and public hearing to the January nineteenth meeting so that we can work forward moving forward with this project.
Thank you, Tim. Chris, how are you?
Good.
Please, both of you introduce yourself and tell us about your project. I'm sure that you have a different view of what procedure ought to be, but let us have it.
Chris Ross, four oh three and four oh one Daniel Webster Highway and seven oh two.
And Joel Sicola, the same, same address?
I'm going to read this memo because I just didn't want to get off track. It kind of explains everything.
Okay.
I want to first thank everybody for their time and service tonight. As some of the board members are aware, Joel and I also own Synergy Self-Storage at four oh three Daniel Webster Highway. Prior to the construction of Synergy Self-Storage, neither Joel nor myself had any experience with operating a self-storage facility. Because of this, we performed all kinds of research. We attended trade shows and we toured other self-storage facilities up and down the east coast from Port LeMain to Atlanta, Georgia. In doing so, we saw things that these and other facilities did that they shouldn't have and discovered things that they should have done and did not. We then implemented these changes and improvements to the design of our facility and the result has proven very successful. Yes, yet as of today, we are not aware of any other self-storage facility which is designed the ways, way ours is or that operates the way ours does. We have now utilized that same type of research and approach for the design of our next venture, an extended stay hotel. That's what we're going to build there. Our two previous projects here in town, we strongly believe were met with unnecessary hurdles during the approval process and the process was drawn out much longer than it should have been. We learned a lot from this and with the help of our engineer have made an extra effort to submit a complete and thorough set of plans as possible to avoid the same issues with this project. We submitted the plan set before the required deadline in order to ensure that our submission would be included on this agenda tonight. It is our understanding that the pre-submission timeframe requirement is in place to allow ample time for staff to review and submit their comments to the board. Needless to say, we were extremely disappointed when we received a copy of the memo and learned that staff was unable to complete their review due to reservations they had about the specifics of our daily business operations within the hotel. Reading Community Development's memo, we feel it necessary to clarify that we are not here tonight to discuss what kind of equipment will be available in the fitness center or whether or not each floor of the building will have its own ice machine or whether or not all the employees will have matching uniforms. For the same reason that each June and December, when we pay the property tax bill on our self-storage building, we are not asked why we run dedicated dehumidifiers in the storage areas or why we have a popcorn machine in the office for our customers, but instead the town of Merrimack happily deposits our check. That's the way it should be. We are here tonight rather simply to determine whether or not the plan set as submitted meets the site design and site layout requirements of a hotel, nothing more. Just as it would be, were it a team from a national hotel chain here making this presentation tonight, they would not be subject to this same type of questioning. So we should not be penalized, lose valuable time, cost us additional funds and have to come back in another month simply because staff did not have time to completely review the plan set. That is not fair to us. In light of this, and so we can move forward as quickly as possible with our project, we ask the board to grant conditional approval of the plan set tonight, subject to forthcoming comments from the various departments and staff as they pertain to the site plan design and site layout, as would be typical for any site application regardless of what it's for. I will now turn the mic over to our engineer, George Chadwick, from Bedford Design Group, who will walk us through the plan set and answer any questions that the board may have with respect to the overall site design. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Would you like me to go through it or would you like to have the use discussion first?
No, let's have to go through it.
Okay. My name's George Chadwick with Bedford Design.
George, if you need a mic...
Grab the microphone from back there. Bring that portable microphone, we can... We can hear you very well, but the folks at homes don't stand a chance.
I understand. I tried to talk as loud as I could.
Oh, it's funny loud for me, but yeah, without a microphone, they just won't pick it up on the...
Sure. Good evening. Again, my name's George Chadwick with Bedford Design. So the parcel is located on Daniel Webster Highway as, as was previously spoken. Ten Pin is located on the top of the plan. The north is to the bottom plan, south is to the, to the top of the plan. The parcel is zone C-two, General Commercial. It's not in the Aquifer Conservation District, nor is it in the Flood Hazard District. There's no wetlands located on site. Access to the parcel will be via DW Highway, via a twenty-eight-foot wide driveway that meets all-season site distance at the intersection with DW Highway. Parking and building is sort of located to the rear of the parcel. The forty-two unit hotel requires forty-five spaces, parking spaces according to your regulations, and we are providing fifty surface parking spaces as well as twenty-two garage spaces. Hotel is serviced by municipal water and sewer. Drainage is collected via closed drainage system and directed and treated in a underground system that's located under the parking lot. Traffic for the hotel, the average daily traffic calculates out to be about a hundred and eighty-five vehicle trips per day. That's ninety-five, ninety-three entering and ninety-three exiting. The PM peak hour traffic is about fifteen vehicle trips per day, seven entering and eight exiting, while the AM peak hours is approximately fourteen with eight entering and seven exiting. I believe Fosse &amp; O'Neil has reviewed the traffic report or memo that was submitted and I believe they concur that the amount of traffic will not adversely affect DW Highway. Landscaping is shown on the landscape plan as well as lighting. Lighting is a night sky type light where all the light is shielded down toward the parking lot. We are asking for one landscape waiver. That landscape waiver had to do with the perimeter landscaping. I believe your regulations call for forty-six trees to be located around the perimeter of this parking lot. We are proposing thirty-one. The reason we do not have the forty-six trees shown is we need some room for, for snow storage. This particular parking lot, the way it's designed, isn't like a, a large mall or that. We have a lot of interior islands and so on and so forth. This one, there's a limited amount of perimeter space and we need to provide snow storage. So we've got some snow storage located in the front, for the front, and I've got some in the back. I do have a couple of trees located there that we'll have to, we'll have to work around as well. Two things to note, there is no bike, and it was mentioned in the review memos, that there was no bicycle parking area facilities as well as electric car provisions. One thing also to note is that there is a sidewalk that runs along DW Highway that stops in front of Ten Pin. Our proposal is not to include that sidewalk until such time as, as, you know, the board would like to see it. Not sure if there's any plans to continue the sidewalk further to the north from here. With that, I think I'm here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you for the presentation and the overview. Board members, the staff has suggested to us in the memo that it's unclear whether this use fits in the hotel category or whether this would be a residential apartment type of use. And the staff has asked us to have a discussion with the applicant to see if we could sort that question out or at least provide them with more information to sort that question out. The difference being that residential is regulated differently than a hotel and would have different site requirements for us to try to figure out and without knowing which use category it falls into, we don't know which ones of our regulations we're applying to the situation. With that in mind, Chris, I know you have a view of what it is. Tell us about the sense that this is a hotel different from an apartment building and, you know, some of the discussion that you've had before with us about that. Yeah, I didn't mean you particularly, any of you.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. So as you know, the, the four oh one project that was, that was currently under construction, that was approved as a twelve-unit apartment building. This is a completely different animal in that this will be designed and built just as a hotel would be. So the amenities that you would see typically in a hotel, you know, there'd be a front, a main, main entrance in front with a lobby and reception area where there'd be a, a staff person at, at a desk and so forth. There would be a fitness center in the building, vending machines, a business center for, you know, for, for the, the people that come to the hotel. I'm not sure what, what else we could do differently or how, how else we could describe it other than it is what it is. This is a hotel, I mean... And I'd like to just add that, you know, we're, as I mentioned in the memo, we, we did, you know, the, the memo basically says that we weren't giving any answers and I have to argue that because we did give answers. They have to understand that we're, we're still putting together our business model. This takes time. It used to take six months to get a project to get approved. Now it takes a year plus. So we want to get the work done, the groundwork done. We're still trying to figure out what, what we're going to do, what, you know, what, what type, how many people are going to work there and, you know, what amenities we are going to offer. But it is going to be a hotel. It's not going to be a residential building. And quite honestly, I don't appreciate it being dragged into, into this project. It's a, it's a fresh project. It's a new business. It's a new venture. So this only delays...
Well, Chris, let me give you a sense of where I'm at with it. You're better off telling me about your project than to worry about trying to argue with the staff over what they think and otherwise. You know, let's start with what it is on, on paper. It is important for the staff to understand what the use is and how it, it actually fits in a category and understanding what it is. You said you did the same research you did with self-storage?
Yes.
Tell me about that research and what you compared it to, that a project that looks like this, maybe one that I'm familiar with, that I can associate in my head?
Okay, sure, sure. So this, the extended stay concept, if you will, is relatively new. The Marriott Corporation, they were the ones who first started. It was about in the two thousand. So it's, it's a fairly new, fairly new concept in, in, in that regard. Residence Inn, the guy who started that was a little bit earlier than that, but generally speaking, that the idea of extended stay is fairly new. There's the concept that, or the model, if you would, that, that we're basing it on, there isn't any close by for us to, to have a direct comparison to, so there's none that we could say, go check out this one here. The closest one that I know of, of, of the model that we're using is in, actually in One of the things, I, I made, compiled some notes, basically that, so an extended stay property by industry definition has a kitchen or kitchenette and weekly rates. That's the two, the two things that, that are like, you know, that, that stand out from everything else, that anybody who rents an extended stay, they require a full kitchen in, in the room and the ability to go weekly or monthly rates, just because by virtue of doing that, they get a better discount than if it was on a daily rate. So that's the whole, the whole idea. So they can, they can rent a place for... So, they can, they can rent a place for, you know, let's say, three weeks to, to three months, whatever it might be. And, and the rate is going to be slightly, slightly more than, say, a, an apartment where they'd have a 12-month lease and they'd be throwing away all that money. But then less than a, you know, a, a daily rate for a typical hotel. So, that's the whole concept for an extended stay. These are some of the things that an extended stay hotel typically includes. In-room Wi-Fi, which most of the, a typical hotel actually has, but those are items that you pay for with a premium. In an extended stay hotel, that would be included as part of the package. Local transportation, onsite laundry centers, fully stocked kitchens, refrigerator, microwave, sink, garbage disposal and oven, recreational facilities, gym, conference room, business center, vending machines, you know, those kind of things. That's what they're looking for, that as much conveniences as, as they would have in their home, but yet it's a home away from home. That's, that's what that type of customer is looking for.
Now, when you brought a conceptual for this site before, you were looking for some warehouse business-type space with a few apartments over it. And the apartments were linked to the potential people that might rent your warehouse space. Are the tenants that you envisioned here associated with moving from house to house and using the storage facility or are these just like the one that's over here at Exit 11? They got to sign up and anybody that wants to come in, come in? Or how's this work?
It's going to be a little bit of everything. So, there's, I, I foresee some, some individuals who are, you know, in between homes and they need a place for six weeks to two months or whatever it might be. But then there's also going to be the people who, let's say, a.
A lot of business travelers.
Yeah, business travelers or one of the, one of the big, a big customers is, is where they have nursing programs, where they have transient nurses, where they go in like 13-week stints into a, a new location. And they need temporary housing. So, those are the kind of people that they need. They want to feel like they have a home, but yet it's not an apartment that they have to rent. It's a hotel.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the kind of, kind of individual.
Tim?
The key question that as staff we have not been able to get firm answer on is whether or not the rooms are furnished as hotel rooms are or if they are minimum, minimally furnished and only providing the kitchen, desk and workspace as was described in the emails we received.
We, we haven't come to the conclusion on that yet. We, in doing our research, there are some of these extended stays that are doing it à la carte. So, if, if somebody is, if a business traveler is coming in and they need a place to stay for a month and a half and they want the whole place furnished, then we would set it up to be furnished. You know, they call it à la carte in the industry. If somebody's in transit and they want to find a place to stay for four months while that house is being built and they don't want the room furnished because they don't want to sleep in a mattress that somebody else and everybody else has slept in, they'll have their own furniture brought in. So, it's, it's something we're looking at. So, our plan would be to put one floor fully furnished, one floor not furnished, see where the demand sits, and then move forward with the other two.
I just, I want to read a comment. This was from Extended Stay America. Most, everybody here is familiar with that. One of their executives in an interview made, he was asked some questions about the, the extended stay concept, and this was his comment. He said, "Our average length of stay is 25 nights. As a result, we develop deep relationships with our guests. We have an opportunity to develop lasting relationships with our guests when they're on the road and return to properties. More than 70% of the brand's guests stay five nights or longer and 42% stay longer than a month. Travelers gone for such long durations want more of the comforts of home. They do not want to eat out all the time." So, that's why they have the, the full, full kitchens. But just on the other extreme, the, there's a, a Marriott in Falls Church, Virginia, an extended stay hotel there, and they, their longest tenant, if you want to call it at that point, was a 79-year-old woman who resided at the hotel for more than 10 years. And over the years, she became close to friends, staff, and actually moved in her furniture from her floor to home. This is, you know, going back to what, what Chris said. So, you do have those situations where if somebody's there a little bit longer term, they're going to want to, you know, they have their favorite chair or whatever, they're going to want to bring that with them. I would have no problem with that.
Tim, do we have a definition of a hotel in our regulation?
We do not define it in our zoning ordinance, and when we don't have that, we generally defer to the American Planners Association Planner's Dictionary. And in our experience, having permitted residential extended, extended stay hotels at both Woodspring and our experience with the residences of Daniel Webster, generally speaking, having a furnished room is one of the things that we have always considered necessary for something to be considered a hotel.
And we plan to do that, but we would like to have that option for our guests. So, we're going to, we're planning to do both.
I appreciate the goal to do that. I'm having a hard time categorizing an unfurnished space as a hotel or a temporary and not an apartment.
I agree.
And talk me through that if you, if you have, have a view of.
Well, they're out there. They're, they're online if you want to, you know, check it out yourselves, but they're, it is a niche market and it's untapped in this area, and we would like to tap it.
Maybe that's an answer, is to do a little bit of research, but just that something is out there doesn't always make it fit within regulations. You see all over the country of the Airbnb business is upside down because it started and it came to existence before anybody realized that it's hotel or it's, or it's transient rental properties or whatever. And all over the place, cities and towns are trying to wrestle with what is VRBO and Airbnb in our, in regulations. So, just because it came into existence and it, it's out there doesn't always answer the question of what in the heck is it in terms of how's it fit in the regulations.
And I, I will add that we have had concerns and issues with the two extended stay hotels that are in town currently. Not only, and I know Tom is familiar with, from being at the council level, some of the illegal activities and police presence that we've had to devote to these facilities in the past. Again, that is not any basis for the board to have any discussion regarding that. However, we've also had issues with people registering vehicles and attempting to register to vote from the extended stay hotels as well. And the Town Court's office and our legal counsel have had a world of time trying to explain that they are not residential units and that you cannot register a vehicle from one of these. And it's, it has led to issues with the Town Court tax collector as well.
And I think you, you talk about there being a need or some story about someone living there for 10 years. I, I, I'm not sure I know where the bright line is, but 10 years is residential. It's wherever the line is, that's way over it. Registering a vehicle.
Like you said, that was an extreme, that was a one case.
Yeah, it's a little unusual for those situations, but registering to vote, registering a vehicle, those kinds of things. The garages that you have lined up here are less than the number of suites. Is there some plan for how those get allocated?
So, our plan was, was to put a, one level down underneath and have underground park, like an underground parking garage like you would typically see in a facility like this. But because we've got so much ledge on site, we're, we're only able to put them on top of the ground. So, we're only, we're only able to put, I think, 21 units, 22 units.
So, how are those allocated to your potential customers?
They're not. It would be, again, it's an à la carte system, so.
Could I rent a garage if I don't stay in your hotel?
No.
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 So, how does it work when I show up there? Do, how do I know a garage is available or?
We would find out what your needs are, and then, you know, are you, are you looking, is it a short-term stay? Are you looking for the room furnished? Are you bringing, are you in transition and do you want to bring your own furniture here? Do you need a garage? You know, there's, there's.
It'd be no different than, than at a typical hotel where you, where you go to the desk and let's, you know, let's say you, you're looking for a, a, a king studio room and they say, "Well, we have no, none of those available. You know, would you take a double queen instead?" It's going to be the same scenario here, that somebody needs, they have a, a nice car. They're, they're coming in the winter, in the winter months especially. They don't want to have to worry about cleaning their car off. They're going to be there for four weeks. They want to be able to park in a, in a garage space. That's, that's kind of the thought process behind that.
You mentioned one of the companies, and it doesn't matter what the national company is, but you mentioned a chain and that 70% of their people stay more than five days? Is that what this, that's, is that the statistic I heard?
This was, yeah. They, it says, "Our average length of stay is 25 nights." And it goes on, it says, "More than 70% of the brand's guests stay five nights or longer and 42% stay longer than a month." That was just one, you know, one company. That was a comment that the guy executive had made.
It's good information to have, but if 70% stay over five nights, then 30% are five, four, one, two, three or four nights. And if you get to an average length of stay of 28 days with 30% of the people under five, you've got some people that are there months and months and months, you know, really long times in just those numbers that you offered up. And those people that are there for four months or six months or a year, that's not hotel. That's, that's residential.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, wouldn't make economic sense for, for somebody to stay for that long period only because they, they can be paying obviously substantial more. You know, once you get to, you know, three months, four months, whatever, that, that point there, yeah, you're better off going and getting an apartment somewhere because it's going to be a lot cheaper for you.
It just doesn't die, it just doesn't jive with the experience we have with the ones that are here already.
Yeah, the ones that are here are the same thing. If, they, they are more than an apartment would be for a small space. They're $500 a week, $2,000 a month. But people are still staying in them for those extended periods because of their credit rating or their position with work or whatever their needs are. And so, lots of people pay up premium, super premium prices to be in these transient kinds of things. And when it lasts for many months, I don't know what the number of months is, but some, somewhere there's a line. It's residential. And if it was residential, we would probably look at a two-acre site, a little less than a two-acre site, and talk about, you know, four units, six units?
For, for 42 units, our zoning ordinance would require about 38 and a half acres.
For residential?
For residential.
Yeah, we're not, we're not looking to build a residential apartment building. That's not what we're here for. We're here.
That's, that's for standard. If it was in a PUD, you'd be allowed, I believe, 60 units per acre.
Yeah, a hotel is an allowable use on that site, and that's what we're coming here for. If I have to furnish every room and be told how I'm going to run my business model, I'm going to have a hard time digesting that. And this is a concept that is out there working, and I would like to take advantage of that concept and bring it to this, to this town, this state.
Well, Chris, I appreciate whatever, whatever that means to say you'd have a hard time digesting that. But a hotel is, is a thing. It's defined. We can figure out what it is. And calling it a hotel when it's different, I mean, you know, my pickup truck is a Ford. It's not a Zebra. It is what it is. We, we don't just sort of get to apply the label to it because that's the label we like. What is it? Are people living there permanently or semi-permanently? Are they bringing their own furniture? Are they setting down roots? Are they registering to vote? Are they registering a car? Can they store their boat in your garage? You know, all of those kinds of things matter a whole lot. And if it's residential, it ought to be regulated like residential. If it's hotel, then we'll regulate it like a hotel. If it's some kind of a hybrid in between that won't fit in either box, we may end up with a place where we can't approve it. We can't figure out how to bring it forward. Now, if you were saying it's a hotel like a Holiday Inn where somebody pays $175 a night and that's the deal, it would be easy to say, "Okay, this is a hotel. Fits within the box." And, and the flexibility that you want to do something that's creative, applaud the creativity, but that's where we're getting stuck with trying to figure out, is this, you know, a hotel or a Zebra?
Yeah. I don't know. I, I.
Yeah, good idea.
I want to be, I want to be candid here when I, when I say this. There's, there's always loopholes for various things, right? And I know I'm on, you know, this, on, on record when I'm saying this, but it is what it is nonetheless. The state of New Hampshire is, is very clear on what they, how, how hotels are, are taxed. If a room is furnished, you pay rooms and meals tax. If we rent the furnishings, we don't pay rooms and meals tax. That's me being as candid as possible.
That makes my argument that this is not a hotel if you're not paying rooms and meals tax.
But this is, this is the, this is my, this is my reason, my reason for that. In doing so, we can offer a little bit better product at the same price. We can offer each individual customer the options that, exactly that they want. If the guy wants to pay 20 bucks for a beanbag chair, he can do that. Or if he wants a nice fancy leather chair, overstuffed chair, he's going to pay a little bit more for that. As Chris said, our, our concept is to, to, to do this à la carte. So, everybody starts with a, with a, the same basic box, if you would, and they decorate it however they want. End of the day, we, you know, stand to have a very unique product, I think, and filling a certain niche that there's, there's a need.
Tim, you mentioned the definition of hotel from the American Planners Association. Do you actually have the definition?
I don't have that book with me. I'd have to go downstairs and grab. It's, it's an online PDF that I have stored on the server.
Okay, understood. That may be something that's useful to this analysis.
Ultimately, what that's going to do is provide us with multiple definitions from other jurisdictions in the United States from which we.
You could pull something.
Pull something from.
I think rooms and meals tax is sort of a, a, a pretty clear hallmark as to whether you are a hotel or whether you're not. And if you're looking for options where some part of your, your development doesn't pay rooms and meals tax, then some part of your development is residential. On, on some level, there's got to be some criteria that you decide it's A or it's B. And rooms and meals tax, to me, is a very clear indicator that you're in one bucket or you're not.
So, let me, let me expand on that just a little bit. So, the, that, that's a, that's a model that we're looking at. But the overall, like, like any, any, any venture that you get into, you always want to have exit strategy, right? So, our exit strategy for, for this particular project is to design the building exactly as if it were to be occupied by Homewood Suites or Extended Stay America, something like that. So, if we decide to get to the point where it comes time to C of O, that we don't want to operate this ourselves. We've already been in contact with several of these companies for that exact same thing, where we can then turn it over to one of those companies. And it's not going to be, you know, Synergy Extended Stay Suites, but maybe it would be Homewood, you know, Home Two or, or one of the others.
Are you aware of a Homewood Suites design that has 42 units?
There's not, not Homewood, not Homewood Suites, but there's a, there's another one down in, in the southern part of the country that they have three models. Actually, their, their smallest model is like 50 units. So, this is right there. Obviously, we can't, we're limited to the lot.
It's smaller than the smallest one you could find.
It's, it's right there, but again, we're limited to the, you know, the lies.
Well, and that's, that's certainly part of the planning board's review is, does it fit on, you know, is this the right level of development for a two-acre lot? But if you're smaller than what Homewood Suites uses for their model, they're not going to buy it from you.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, not, not Homewood Suites. There's a different one, but regardless.
A little further on the rooms and meals tax from DRA. Tax must be collected on all room rentals of less than 185 consecutive days. When a patron reaches the 185th consecutive day of occupancy, the operator must refund the patron the tax monies that have been collected because it's essentially residential.
Tim, I'm sorry. You're going to have to repeat that with a microphone.
I forgot. I'm sorry about that. DRA has an FAQ regarding the meals and rooms and meals tax. It says that when is a long-term room rental subject to meals and room? Tax must be collected on all room rentals of less than 185 consecutive days. When a patron reaches the 185th consecutive day of occupancy, the operator must refund the patron the tax monies that have been collected. And that's basically at that point, you're long-term residential.
I think that as a board, sort of saying, "Well, if it's got a fitness center, it's a hotel, and if it doesn't have a fitness center, or if they have laundry in their rooms instead of laundry on their floors, that makes a difference," that's, that's down into the weeds that I don't want to get to. I don't really have a lot of interest in that. But length of stay is a perfectly good metric to decide whether something's a hotel or not. And as a condition of approval, saying that the maximum length of stay is X in, in order to be a hotel?
How do we enforce that, though?
I don't know.
So, we're, we're, you know, as far as the furnishing, furnishings go, we're, we're going to build a hotel. I mean, if, if it has to have furniture inside of it and you, and somebody wants to break up my business model and, you know, take a risk doing it their way, then sure, we'll, we'll furnish the rooms. But I, I just find that unbelievable.
But my issue isn't specific with you, Chris. It's, I have to make sure.
I, I hear you, but I'm trying to, but I'm bringing, this is my business. This is my venture, okay? This is my business model. And I, I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time accepting the fact that I'm being told how I'm going to run my business. So, that's how I feel.
Chris, can I interrupt for a second?
That's how I feel. Sure.
Every single applicant that's ever appeared before is talking about their business. The fact that it's your business doesn't add anything to the puzzle. The idea that you. Um, the idea that you're being told how to run your business is not true at all. We're telling you what's allowed in this zone, and it can be a hotel if it's a hotel. But it can't be a, it can't be an apartment building that's masquerading as a hotel. That's a different thing, and that's what we're trying to sort out. Um, because if it's, i- i- if it's not what it appears to be or not what it claims to be, um, we gotta regulate it in that view. And frankly, we've also gotta take into consideration, which we do with many, many applicants, what happens if your business model, if you build a forty-two unit something and it doesn't work? Are you gonna be back before us saying, well, can we convert this to an apartment building? And we've done that five times across town. I can name all the buildings. Um, where someone come up with a commercial plan and it didn't work out for them, and then they come hat in hand saying, will you let me be the thing that I wanted to be in the first place? Um, and the board is always frustrated at that point, thinking, if I'd have known that when you first asked me, I probably would have voted differently. Um, and this is another one of those examples where if your model doesn't work the way you think it does, what happens? Does this become a forty-two unit, you know, residence by default? Because. By default. Now, um, a- a- another concept that's underlying here, and Tim, help me, uh, i- if this is not what we do in Merrimack, but in some other jurisdictions that I've dealt with as an attorney, when you've got a hybrid something that fits in two buckets, you get the most restricted set of regulations.
Ultimately, by, by our ordinance, it is the responsibility of the planning and zoning administrator to make a determination when a use is not clearly defined. And in this circumstance, we're asking the board for their guidance so that Robert can make that final determination.
Okay. So we, we make a determination one way or another. I've seen appli- I've seen jurisdictions that just say, if you've got a foot in both boats, you get the most restrictive boat, uh, whatever that is, which would be residential for you.
Yeah, so, so if I, if I could just ask a question. So is, is there, is there something we could get from, from the board? You know, that, a, a list of, you know, checkmarks, say, as long as we check this, it's a, it's, it's a hotel. Is there something definitive that we could get?
Well, it's what we were talking about before, was trying to look at that definition to see what it, what, what light it could shed on this. I think certainly rooms and meals tax is one thing. I think, uh, understanding the length of stay that people will have is another thing. Understanding whether people are moving into a unfurnished or a furnished. And I don't really care about the choices of furniture. And if you wanna à la carte and someone's got a choice between the cheap stuff and the good stuff, that's fine, but no empty rooms. You know, that sort of thing. When you, um, you know, tell, ta- tell us about what else is going on in the facility. I do have all sorts of concerns about, you know, um, what else has gone on the site for managing extended stay? Um, lighting and security and, um, amenities for people that are gonna be there. Uh, if they come in with children, um, is there some way to understand how this site would operate around children? Is there a play area? You talked about snow storage and the snow storage being up front. The snow storage is right where the visual from the highway would be. And, you know, putting your snow right out there to be the face of the thing. Um, I, I don't really know how that fits. I've never seen any kind of a hotel that has the garage rental kind of a concept that you have. Find me some examples of some companies. Uh, even if I can't go see them, give me the name of the one in Maryland. Let me look up it on its website and see what it looks like, how big it is, how they've done it.
So, a- again, back to the, to the garages, our ideal scenario would be to have them underneath the building. But in the, I believe it's a, is it the south corner there, George, where we hit ledge at five feet? So, so there's, there's ledge under the, the, the left side of the building there as you're looking at it on the paper. So there's no way to get, to go down an extra, you know, go down twelve feet or whatever would be required to get, drive under parking there. The site just isn't suited for that.
And there are people in the industry that, that absolutely want a garage. I, I would want a garage.
I don't argue that there isn't a customer for that, but, um, the fact that you hit ledge on your site and your site therefore isn't suitable for a building with a basement, it doesn't necessarily bring about some different view of how it ought to be regulated. And you could build, you know, above, you know, a different structure than would be allowed somewhere else. At some point, if the site isn't suitable for the idea, then, you know, get a different site, get a bigger site, get, or build something else on this site. Um, it's not sort of a automatic that just because your site's got a quirk, that you can do whatever other idea you think of that aims at a particular goal.
Well, d- does that make it not a, not a hotel if there's garage space?
I don't know what it makes it. Um, it certainly seems like a feature that's much more common with residential than with hotel. That's, i- in terms of weighing all of the, what, what have you got? Um, if I'm trying to decide what it is, I'm looking at the totality of all the facts that you've listed. Uh, unfurnished apartments, not paying rooms and meals taxes, having hotel, uh, garage space available for the people that want it, all sound like things that are way more common in a residential apartment than they are in a hotel.
Okay, so now we're taking, now we're stripping the garages and we're gonna furnish the rooms. I mean, the whole business model is being changed by the Merrimack Planning Board.
I'm not changing your business model at all, Chris.
Oh, oh, we are, we are. I had a business plan.
Mr. Ross.
I had a business plan.
If you wanna argue with me, you can.
I'm just saying, Bob, I had a business plan and it's being picked apart. I mean, I mean, seriously.
I'm trying to s- figure out how your business plan fits with the regulations that we have to apply in the zone. That's the only thing I care about. If your business plan works or doesn't work, and i- if it doesn't work and it has to be rehabbed into something else, I guess I'm concerned about that and the periphery, but what you, where your customers come from and all those kinds of things, that's all up to you. But does it fit within our regulations? Can I approve it? Can I vote on it? Do you meet all the requirements of our regulation? And I can't tell that if I don't know what it is. If I, if it looks like an apartment building, just like the other apartment buildings that are down the road from it, then I regulate it like apartment, apartment building.
Okay, so I guess, I guess the, I guess the idea is then we'll get a list of things that, uh, community development thinks that is necessary for me to run my business, and we'll get those implemented into that, into that s- system so that we can have, build our hotel. This is the way we'd like to build it, uh, because we think it's gonna be a winner. Uh, but if, uh, somebody else wants to rewrite my business plan, then we can do that.
Mr. Ross, nobody's rewriting your business plan. You, as a business owner, as long as any, any other business owner in this room, have to conform to the same sets of regulations. The big guys that we've had should have had tonight, the little guys that we also, they're all in the same regulations. We're not trying to rewrite any of your business plans.
Model. Business model.
Business model, whatever it is you wanna call it, but.
So back, back to the, the question that I had previously. Is the, the board willing or community development, either, either one, willing to give us a list of, of items that as long as we check off, you know, five of this ten items in this list or whatever, then we have a hotel? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't even know which, which way to go now.
I mean, I think Tim's department is always open to any applicant and answering their questions. Um, but you've gotta provide them some information when they have questions about your plan. Um, you know, if you were drawing a picture of a site with a, uh, a hundred and forty thousand square foot big box store, and then you were telling me it was Walgreens, I'd be like, no, that's Walmart. That's the size of a Walmart. And you could argue with me about what it is and say, no, no, we're only gonna sell prescription drugs. We're Walgreens. But you're not. And arguing with me about it and saying, well, my business model, my business model, my business model, it's a residential development. I- if you don't want it to be a residential development, then make it a commercial development. It's not me that's changing your business model.
That's what we're doing. That's what we're trying to do, and I'm being told that I'm not. So I guess we'll have you tell me how I'm gonna do that, because this is how we wanna do it.
It sounds like you're trying to capitalize on both, both ends of it. The, the hotel people and the people that need a longer stay, more like a residential stay.
No, no.
So somebody, you start, even used it in your, in your description, you said, um, you said you, it's for homestead, uh, not homestead. You used a, uh.
Homewood Suites?
Yeah. Well, no, you were, you were referring to it as, like, if somebody needed an apartment. They could ha- they can come here and they can decorate it, or they can put their own furniture in it. It sounds like a, an apartment to me.
We're, we're not doing that anymore. We changed that.
I'm just saying that.
We had to. I mean, if you, if you go online.
It's like you're trying to get the whole spectrum of people that need somewhere to stay.
Yeah.
And that falls into a couple of different categories. People that need a hotel, or somebody that needs an apartment.
I mean, maybe, uh, maybe community development could go online and take a look at some extended stay hotels and find one that they like, and we could just mirror their concept, and that would solve the problem.
Chris, I know that you think that it's helping your argument to say, maybe the department can do this, or maybe the department can do that. Ultimately, you've gotta put a presentation before us that we can vote on. It's up to you. If you want us to vote on this one, I don't think you'll like the result.
Well, I, I know, but I mean, you know, so I need you to tell me what you don't like so that I can change it.
I, I think you've gotta meet the qualifications for a business model. And if you're gonna be a residential model, then you'll be regulated like one. If you wanna be a hotel model, then you'll be regulated like one of those. But you can't be one and call it the other.
So will community development be willing to give us a, a list of items that?
I would go with what the chairman had spelled out earlier. The rooms and meals tax is an important component. The length of stay, the furnishing of the apar- it's, ultimately, it's not my job nor will I have my staff dictate what specifically you need to do to be qualified for an apartment, as an apartment versus a hotel. That's for you to present us with the information that you want to have us present to the board. And ultimately, the members that sit up here are the ones that have to make that decision. I, given the, the challenges that this particular concept that you've provided us has, I don't believe as a staff, we're going to be comfortable making any determination without guidance from this board.
Okay, so, I guess then, then back, back to the board. Is, is the board willing to give us some guidance on what items we should include in the business model to be considered a hotel?
So that we can build a hotel, which is an allowable use on the property.
I'll offer you my comments if you like. I don't know if other board members have comments as well. Um, so we talked about rooms and meals tax. We talked about whether it's furnished apartments. I think the kitchens in a hotel are the basic efficiency type kitchens. They're not full ovens and stoves and all of that.
Well, a- actually, that, uh, that is actually one of the items. The single most defining characteristic of the extended stay product is the in-room full kitchen.
Yep. Um, there aren't full kitchens in the other two extended stay hotels in town. They're very, very basics. I think they have two burner stoves and that's, uh, uh, cooktops, but no stove, no oven, um, and that sort of thing. And I'm not necessarily trying to parse the difference between two burners or three burners or that sort of thing. But a very basic, get-you-by, uh, for a short period of time kitchen is what an extended stay hotel ought to have. If you've got a full, like, eat-in kitchen, you know, like, uh, an apartment has, then it's gonna be an apartment. There's, uh, uh, on, on some level, uh, if you've got some that are, you know, like suites with two bedrooms, I think that's okay. There's some room for that. But if you're all two-bedroom suites for the whole thing, um, it sounds like it's gonna be not. Um, if you tell me your target customer is, uh, you know, gonna be there for a month at a time, or you said the definition of it is weekly rates, then you talked about a hotel that offers stays of less than five days. Are you gonna be a weekly contract only or a monthly contract only? What is this thing?
Uh, no, it, it would be daily, weekly, monthly. I mean, that would be how, how the rate structure would be.
That's how they typically work.
But now, when you said that, that the defining characteristic of them is having a weekly rate, not a monthly rate.
That's just, yeah, that's one of the, uh, the industry definition. Extended stay properties by industry definition have a kitchen, a kitchenette, and weekly rates. So when it says weekly rates, and not, not that they're limited to weekly rates, but that they have the option to get a weekly rate or a monthly rate because you get a better discount.
There are weekly and monthly rates of the current existing ones in town.
Yeah, yeah.
I think if you get to that point where that Dread talks about a hundred and eighty-five days and you're no longer rooms and meals taxes, a hundred and eighty-five days is six months. Six months is too long. Uh, if you're, if you are anticipating your customers are gonna be there six months, then you're residential. To me, that's, if I'm gonna come up with a bright line, that's one that I could live with. I don't know if anybody else thinks that four months or some other period of time makes the difference. When you talk about traveling nurses, uh, I work in the healthcare industry. I used to hire traveling nurses. We put them in apartments, real live apartments, not extended stay hotels. Um, even though it was thirteen weeks. Thirteen weeks is a quarter of a year. And you, you can get apartments, real regular apartments and apartment complexes for three months at a time, uh, if you're in the industry. Those are not, to me, extended stay hotels. The extended stay, uh, is the, uh, customers that you actually see in the ones that we have here. You know, work trucks and people on a construction site who are here in town while the project is, and they're gonna move on when the project's done. But somebody that's, you know, setting down roots, and this is where they're gonna be with, with no particular plan for the next step. Now, at the same time that you're asking me to define those things for you, if those things are things that the community development department can't enforce, then I can't even take those things into, into account.
I know, but, I mean, just as an example, just, uh, if, from, coming from my standpoint, I mean, I, we're, we're talking about wanting to, you know, you know our facility. We've got the nicest, most cleanest friggin' facility in New England. We wanna make this better than what's out there. We wanna put a full kitchen in. And we're, we're being, you know.
I, I don't argue with your facility, 'cause I've been complimentary every time you've come up here before your facility, and you know that I rent a space in your facility.
I know, but, you know, I don't wanna put a, I don't wanna put this little dinky kitchen out. I wanna create a nice place where they, where they, where they're happy to be there.
I get it, but they call those places apartments.
So, so the way the, a- as it stands right now, the, the, the rough design for each one of the units would include a full kitchen, so they'd have all the appliances. It's not gonna be a big kitchen, but they would have all the appliances that, that they would need as if, you know, they were, they were at home or whatever. There'd be a little breakfast bar where they can put a couple, or there'd be some stools there for them to sit at, but there's not gonna be room for like a dining room table or anything like that. It's not that big.
Will every suite have a kitchen?
I'm sorry?
Every suite have a kitchen?
Ev- every suite will have its ki- that's the whole, that's the whole idea, yeah, yeah.
I don't know that I have a number in mind that's the difference between a, a hotel room or a apartment, but you've got a forty-two thousand square foot building with forty-two suites in it, common area. You're gonna be about eight hundred square feet per unit?
The, the two-bedroom ones would be about eight hundred feet. The, uh, the one-bedroom ones are like six, uh, six hundred and thirty feet if I remember correctly.
So they're gonna be laid out like a, like an apartment. A lot of hotels that I stay in, they seem to be like one room, the bed, everything's kinda right there. So if I were to stay for a few days, it's, you know, standard hotel room, not necessarily a separate, not necessarily a separate bedroom, per se. But it sounds like, it, again, it sounds like you're building apartments.
No, I mean, I, I agree with you, Neil, in terms of what I've seen for hotels, but at the same time, there are certainly lots of hotels out there that have two or three bed, two-bedroom.
Oh, I've stayed in those as well, but I think.
There is an all-suites motel, a ho- all-suites hotel motto, which is what I think this layout is based on.
I'll tell you what, maybe this would be a good idea. Maybe, maybe I, maybe I take a ride and, um, take a look at three or four fairly new extended stay hotels in our area, not in Merrimack, 'cause they're pretty rundown. And, um, I'll see what they offer, and we'll come in here with their model, and that way, there's no confusion. It's a hotel.
I mean, there is, I don't, I don't wanna, um, give the information here because I don't, I don't wanna give it in, in, in error. But I can provide community development with basically the business model of another extended stay hotel that, that we're kinda, that we're hoping to model off of. Um, as I said, that's the one that, the closest one that they have is in Maryland. Uh, but it's mainly a, a southeast kind of, kind of a model.
Well, understanding more about that model from Maryland, give me the website so I can have a look at it. I mean, I'm not gonna drive to Maryland, and I don't want you to have to go down there and get pictures of it either. But I'm sure they have a website with some photographs.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Some outline of what they do. And, um, if there's more than one example that you wanna look at, then get us some examples. You know, get me comfortable with the idea that this is a hotel. Get us all, and I mean.
Yeah, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. That's what we'll do.
And if there's some locally that you know of that are kind of like what you wanna do, um, you know, show me what those look like.
Yeah. I, I would just note that WoodSpring has only been there for three years, I think.
Yeah, it's not an old building.
So they're still relatively new.
Yeah, it's not an old building. Um, i- it's obviously a lot larger than this. Now, separate from whether this is a hotel or whether this is a, an apartment, um, general comments on the site. I wanna make sure that we're attractive from the, uh, from the streetscape, that we're attending to, you know, what, what do people see when they drive by? Where is your sign gonna be? What's your sign gonna look like? How does it fit in with, you know, what's nearby to it? And I know that you're next to the bowling alley and stuff, and there's other commercials, so I'm not telling you, you can't be commercial. At the same time, you know, it certainly wants to look good. This, to me, um, strikes me as an awful lot of development on this site. It, it doesn't leave a whole lot of green space. I know that there's some trees that are plunked into some narrow strips of grass here and there, but, um, you can't put all the trees that the regulations require. That's why you wanna waiver for, from that regulation. I'm not sure the fire department is gonna love the building. They can't drive completely around on all sides.
Actually, they, yeah, they.
Not a four-story building.
There's access. Um, the, the bowling alley's parking lot is right behind us.
One way or another, and I'm not gonna be the, the, the voice of the fire department. If that's satisfactory to them, great. Um, make sure that it is, because if they say no, then that's gonna kill the whole thing.
Right.
Um, they, they typically have not been willing to access a site from the other, from the neighboring site, mostly 'cause they can't figure out how to respond to an address. mostly because they can't figure out how to respond to an address if they're going in the neighbor's parking lot to get there. But check with the fire department on that. If this is going to be extended stay where people are staying for weeks and they're between houses and things like that, you figure out children. The sidewalk's gonna have to be mandatory, by the way. Build that. But children, is there some outdoor area? Is there some, but the bicycle storage kind of a concept? You know, a little bike, it's a small thing.
We'll take a look at the other extended stays and see what they, what they offer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Think about that a little bit. This does just look like to me putting five pounds in a three-pound can. And so, think about that in terms of the scale and scope. At the same time, I get the idea that volume matters and a business model that works at 42 units might be doesn't work when it's, you know, set, scale back a little bit. At the same time, you know, it needs to be workable on the site. I'm sure that Bedford Design has done their drainage analysis and they understand what that's all about. Those under-parking lot drainage does have a bunch of maintenance requirements for it and you have to be able to access those, what do they call the chambers, the underground chambers.
The other thing is this being in proximity of St. Obane, there's probably going to be a limitation on what can be infiltrated into the ground per the PFAS requirements.
No, why didn't you think about that? You guys think about that. I don't wanna. But, yeah, that's certainly gonna be an issue to figure out. I've already noticed from when you cut the trees on the site, water stands on that site for a long time and I don't know how much will infiltrate there at all.
That's actually incorrect. The water that you saw standing towards the front of the lot is from my neighbor's sump pump in his basement, which was extracting water onto my property. It has since been repaired and that water issue is gone.
I will certainly keep my eyes open as I drive by it every day, which I do in both directions, but, boy, it was wet for a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
And it looked like it had, you know, a lot of, whatever it was, was soils that were not absorbing very quickly. Whether the water comes from the neighbor or not, if your soils aren't accepting the flow, have you done any test pits on the site?
Yes, yes.
We did nine, nine test pits up there.
How were your flows in your test pits? How did the test pits work? How did they flow?
We didn't do perk tests, we did test pits and the test pits had a decent soil.
Okay.
Yeah. We did hit ledge up in the, was that the south?
Make sure you use a microphone when you, grab the mic. I'm sorry to be a pain in the butt about that. The folks at home aren't gonna get that. So, I'll play the part of Pete Gagnon here and ask you what soil types you actually got.
Yeah, as Joel had said, we did hit some ledge in this corner, but it seems to drop off real quick. And that's why he was saying about not being able to put a garage under the building. But we did do several test pits up on the front here and it's a well-drained soil. I don't know why the water was being perched up there, but.
That was down, down by the road.
Yeah, it was right up on the road.
Yeah, it's my neighbor to the, it's my neighbor to the, on the bottom of the plan, that neighbor right there. His, you know, his pump goes out the front yard and it was going onto my property. It's been repaired, it's all gone.
Take your word for that. Are your soil types on this plan somewhere?
They should be in the plan. So, take a look on the second sheet.
Sheet two of 15 is existing conditions. And I don't see soil type on here. Site plan, I don't see soil types there either. What's that?
Yeah, it wouldn't be on the site plan either.
I've got a grading plan. That's where I was.
Probably in the drainage.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you tell me about the soil type, I'm not gonna know anything about, but at least it'll give me something to go look up and then I'll know something about it.
Procedural question for the board to consider, where we are and given the uncertainty regarding the use, does it make sense to just do a general continuance of this application with that use question pending? Or does it make sense to continue out to a date further out and have a conceptual discussion with the applicant at some point in between so that we get that, the use question answered without having to be part of the actual site plan discussion?
Which one is most suited for this idea that Chris is gonna find us some comparables that give us some websites?
I'm trying to be sensitive to the costs of a butter notification and whatnot. Generally speaking, in this situation, I'd recommend withdrawing and going through the conceptual process and then resubmitting, which would require new fees for butter. But I'm trying to be sensitive to that, so I'm wondering if it makes sense to continue, perhaps to February, with a January conceptual to discuss where things are with the use.
What are your thoughts about having to do butter notifications again?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to, you know, I don't wanna waste money. I've learned my lesson on spending, you know, excessive money on, on things, so.
It looks like you only got five or six of butters, so.
Yeah, so it would make sense to just continue it, but I don't see why we couldn't bang out both things on that next meeting in January.
Simply because it's gonna, what the use determination is, is gonna depend on the process moving forward, whether or not you need to go to the zoning board before we can even accept the application as complete.
Well, I think I, I think.
Or whether or not the regulations change to residential or, that's where I'm at.
But I think we'd be safe if we're walking in here with a business model of an actual extended stay hotel, so.
It's just the risk you'd be taking, that's why.
Yeah, we're gonna scrap our business model and we're gonna just copy one that's already in place with, with a national chain.
So, I have an extra question. You mentioned parking was sufficient for a hotel use, but I'm wondering for an extended stay, if you have two-bedroom units and whatnot like that, if we have enough parking planned for the units here, do we have any way to kind of feel that out or justify?
The parking is calculated by the actual number of bedrooms in the, in the, in the building, not necessarily.
We have 42 units, some of them are twos and some of them are ones.
For hotel, under the regulations, it's done by number of units. If we did by residential, it'd be by number of bedrooms.
So, on this site, I think they've got 45 surface parking spaces and 22 in garage units, so they've got 67 spaces, is that right?
Yeah, and we actually, we.
That would be about one and a half per unit.
It's actually 50 spaces, surface.
50 surface, so 72?
And 20 of those are only available if you pay for them.
Yeah, there's lots of hotels.
I'm just saying, if they're not being bought, they're not gonna be used.
No, that's true, although paying for parking in a hotel is.
The multifamily parking requirement is half of space per bedroom, plus a half per dwelling unit, plus one guest parking space for every 10 units.
So, basically, one per.
I mean, that's, that's an interesting factor. I mean, if you're there for an extended time, you're gonna have guests and stuff as well, so. Potentially. And you brought up kids and stuff like that, so, I mean, families are gonna have two cars at least and.
Yeah, although when we've seen some of the smaller apartment building studios in one-bedrooms, they don't have as many kids. I mean, if there's 42 units in here, the numbers would probably kick out one kid.
Studios in one bedroom. Well, yeah, I'm not worried about the school, if that's what you mean.
Well, I mean, in terms of number of parking spaces or how big of, how many of these people are actually gonna be families, you're probably gonna have one in the building at a time on average numbers.
It's gonna be minimal, yeah.
I mean, you started out by saying people that were transient between houses and stuff like that while they're building a house. You know, so we, we're going both ways, so I'm just, I think parking's gonna be an issue if you go with extended stay.
You know, according to the regulations, it is an issue. We actually put excessive parking on the site and I was about to ask Bob if he wanted me to remove some of the parking to put some more green space because we've actually got it to spare.
I don't think you do, personally, but.
Well, if we're, if we can become comfortable with some number of parking that is less than this, I'm glad to have more green space. I would rather not pave the world, but get us comfortable with that. I guess, I don't wanna sort of keep coming back to the idea of residential, but what does a 42-unit residential building this size need for parking? And how does that compare to these two things? Are we a hybrid between the two? Is it the same? I mean, it might be roughly that same 77-ish number for a 42-unit building with, with single and two-bedroom apartments in it.
That's, that's more than enough parking, I mean.
And as far as, as far as no one's gonna use it, they're not gonna pay for it, you know what? I'll put some of the garage units with the, with the, with the units and then it'll be designated to that apartment. There's solutions on the table to rectify that, so.
Yep. But just getting comfortable with the parking and if you can do with less parking and you'll have more green space, I love that idea. I mean, I don't wanna pave the world. I'd much rather have green space.
Well, I've always heard that you guys would rather have parking, so.
Since we've done our 2013 master plan, which talks about compact development and walkable communities, it's not about parking as much anymore.
But if you look at Merrimack 360, that parking fills up a lot closer than anybody ever thought it would.
Yeah.
When they backed off and said, "We don't need as much parking as we're regulated."
No, you're exactly right, although a parking lot that stays somewhere around three-quarters full means you've built the right amount of parking. If you, if it was half-full at best, you built twice as much as you need and that shouldn't be the goal.
Maybe.
Anyway, whatever.
Whatever.
When do you want to come back and when do you think?
Yeah, as soon as possible.
I don't see the information coming together in two weeks, so that you've got a chance to give us.
We'll have our side done.
What's that?
We'll have our side done.
I know, but if you're gonna give me some examples that I've gotta go find time to take a look at a website and you're gonna give me some paperwork to read and.
When is the next one, January?
The next regularly scheduled meeting beyond the one in two weeks would be January 5th or 3rd, I believe. I don't have the 2020, give me a sec.
Whatever the first Tuesday of the year is, one, I'll have it a sec.
It's a month away.
Two, three, 4th, January 4th.
I'll have some data to Tim's office in 48 hours.
January 4th and 18th are the two planning board meetings and.
All right, so we'll go for the 4th.
So, are we on the 4th? With additional information, still solving this question about the use.
That's the question I have for the board, is do you wanna just move forward with a general continuance to that point and then tackle everything at that point? Or do you want to have a more conceptual, free-flowing discussion regarding the use, separate from the amendment, so that after that discussion, George and his team can make whatever changes the plans are necessary?
I think if we're coming in here with an actual business model from, you know, a chain, there's not gonna really be much discussion on the use anymore.
I, I think that you're probably right. I don't know whether that will change the plan that Bedford Design has done for you.
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, not at all.
I think, I think it could.
We'll find out, we'll find out at that meeting, but I don't think.
I, I wouldn't recommend continuing. If you're gonna do a straight continuance, I wouldn't recommend anything shorter than the first meeting in January.
Well, I agree with that. So, if we're supposed to look at some information, how does that work? Are we gonna, board members, are you okay getting, you know, some, some links that you can go check out on your own? Do you want printouts on paper to say some pictures and descriptions?
Will?
Hang on a second, let's see what these guys want.
I think we should have the discussion, the big discussion first, before we, before they go preparing another site plan or submitting another site plan. So, we gotta resolve this basic issue. Is it a fish or a fowl? Is it a, a, I'm not settled whether it's a residential or a hotel right now. And I don't think we have come to an agreement on that. And I think that, with the, all this backup that we're gonna need, we're gonna need time to hash that out among ourselves and come to some agreement on it as to the path they should take. It may mean going to the ZBA before they even come here.
It could, although we don't, we haven't always or very frequently asked for variances. We've done conditional approvals that require the variances after on certain projects. But I'm really thinking about the logistics of the discussion. If Chris is gonna show us a business model that says, "Here, it's a hotel. It's just like Homewood Suites. Here's a picture of it." What do we need to do to see that and understand it and say, "Okay, yeah, I agree with you, Chris. This is a hotel." Do we need to have materials brought before us at a meeting? Do we have to have stuff that's sent to us between the meetings?
I would say, given the fact that you do have a butters in the audience who are here specifically for this, that it take place at a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, we're not gonna vote outside of a meeting by any circumstance, but can there be materials that are supplied to us that are put in our packet that we're spending time between the meetings reviewing?
Yes, that's typical for any application, so yes, as long as it's submitted to the department and available for public inspection for a butters to come.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
It's just the, the, the two days before the meeting.
No, I would, I would need things to be in by the application deadline for that first meeting in January.
I'll have it in your office in 72 hours.
Yeah, but they don't get to us, to this point. We don't get our material till the night before.
I've been a little bit better with the mail at my place, but not a whole lot. This is Friday before. But anyway, if we, if I got it on Friday and then we talked about it on Tuesday and Chris walks us through it and explains what it is, that's fine with me, but that means that on that Tuesday in January, we're gonna decide whether you're, we agree that you've adapted to a hotel model.
That complicates my department till review and the other departments' review because until you make that decision, we're not sure what we're reviewing.
Yes, and that's exactly the point, is that, that means that we don't get to a final review in the first week of January. That means we decide it's a hotel and the staff has some marching orders.
Correct.
All right, so, so can I just ask a question here? We, we, we have every intention of building a hotel. So, let's, let's get that right out in front, that when we come to the meeting, January 4th, we're gonna, we're coming, as we came tonight, to get the approvals for, for a hotel. So, we're gonna provide whatever information that, that the board feels, you know, they, they need to be reassured of that. So, I, you know, I wanna go to, go to, about it in that, in that manner, that, you know.
Well, that's, that's a fair point and so, Tim, if, if there wasn't confusion about what they were and Robert could tell what they were, the planning board doesn't need to make that decision or weigh in on it, right?
Correct.
And so, if they were able to supply an application that was clear enough that Robert had no doubt about his choice, they could arrive in January with a site plan.
Yes, but that, that would have to be done and we would be basing it off of the information that the board has relayed to the applicant here tonight.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that if they're able to convince Robert?
It's ultimately if Robert can, feels comfortable making that decision without the board's further inputs.
That's what we'll do then.
I can't guarantee that's gonna happen, that's.
Is that putting Robert on the hot seat where the applicant's now gonna put the sweep?
That is putting Robert in the position of his job duties.
Yeah, we're, we're bringing to him exactly what the hotels in the area are.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that.
There's gonna be no question whatsoever.
Tim, if you're comfortable with that and you think that that's Robert's job and he's not gonna be part of the responsibilities of the position.
When you say, you said, you keep saying hotels in the area, but then you keep mentioning Maryland. Maryland is just a clear no.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, Maryland in the area, whatever, extended stay hotels.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, because as we said, there's two or three in this town, which is the immediate area.
Extended stay hotels, it's a business, it's a hotel. That's the business we're gonna get involved.
Okay, just making that clear, so don't try to say it's in the area and then show me something from southern Mason Dixon.
That's a little bit, yeah, we don't wanna WoodSpring. Yeah, all right, I get you.
Okay.
Nelson, you have a comment?
If this comes in as a hotel, that's what I'm hearing right now, the next step is ZBA, a hotel doesn't fit on this.
Hotel is a permitted use. Pardon? A hotel is a permitted use. Residential is what's not permitted.
Okay, all right, all right, if that's, okay, I just want.
Residential would require both a special exception and a variances for density and potentially other things. A hotel is a permitted use in the C2 district.
If it's determined that.
If it's determined that's what the use is, yes.
Which is what we'll ensure that it is.
That's what we're bringing.
Yeah.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that?
There are a couple of other things that have been mentioned, like the size of the building, the concerns of the fire department and things like that. I would recommend you make sure all that stuff's clean too. And that's not gonna happen in two days or 72 hours.
That won't happen by January 4th in terms of getting plans to the fire department, getting their feedback and then you complying with whatever they tell you.
They have the plans already. We just haven't received comments from them yet.
But they're not sure what, whether, whether they're reviewing a hotel or apartment building.
Well, the application was for a hotel, so I would, I would hope that, that's what they're.
I don't know that necessarily the fire department cares one way or the other. It's a, it's a multi-occupancy building from their perspective. It's not, they don't look at it the same way we, we had it from a use perspective, from zoning perspective.
But they do smile when they see it's steel and concrete and sprinklered with a fire panel.
Will they have a review ready by the 4th?
I would hope so. I would expect, I would have expected to have one whenever this plan get, continued to. It's very typical with the peer review process that our first meeting is typically initial introduction, go over the project and then continue out for a month to allow peer review and the other departmental reviews to come in.
All right. And so, what we're considering, board, if we're ready to do it, is continuing this to January 4th or?
January 4th.
January 4th.
I, you may want to, just for the benefit of the butters who are here that I believe are looking to speak, just explain why you probably aren't gonna let them speak tonight?
Yeah. Good point.
Yeah, I saw abutters who wanted to speak, or I saw hands going up.
We haven't accepted the application yet, so we've got no basis to hold a public hearing?
No, but I think you can still ta-, I think you can still take a butter input if there is any.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can hold a public hearing without accepting the application.
That's right.
And that's, I think, what Tim wanted me to explain to the applicants. And of course, if we accept the application, then we've decided that its use is what it is, and we're on that train, and we're also on a sixty-five day decision clock, which is why we wouldn't, I wouldn't support accepting it.
Yeah.
But that's the nature of things. It's not a public hearing until it's accepted.
Right.
But does anybody have any other comments? Okay, let me offer that explanation, which we just sort of offered. Public hearings are part of the process when the application's accepted, and the reason why you don't do it ahead of time is that the application may change quite a bit between now and whenever it gets accepted. In fact, we expect that it will change quite a bit between now and, when it's accepted. So hearing public testimony about a thing that may not be proposed, may not be accepted as complete, doesn't benefit anybody. But even, even without that analysis of what's good or useful or otherwise, the statute says you do a public hearing for the, when, when you've accepted the application. And so while I appreciate that folks wanna have something to say, please, please, please come back in January, take a look at whatever the plan has become by then, and let's hear the comments on that. With that in mind, it's appropriate for the board to take up the question of continuing it in one way or another, with, with or without further notice to abutters. Anybody?
Put somebody else to it.
If nobody wants to vote to continue it, then you can vote on it tonight, and accept it and deal with it, it's one or the other.
I make a motion that we, we continue the application.
There you go.
To January fourth, no further.
January fourth.
No further written notice to abutters, please.
With no?
With no further written.
Further notice to abutters.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'll second the motion. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of continuing to January fourth with no further notice to abutters, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero.
All right.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for the information that's going forward.
All right, thank you, thank you. Tim, I'll see you probably, I promise.
Okay. Let's see if I've got an agenda here somewhere, I can find what the next thing we're supposed to do is.
Lucky that.
All right, that is, brings us to item number eleven. While they're clearing the room, why don't we take a five-minute, anybody that needs a restroom break or anything, do that. So we are suspended for five minutes, adjourned for five minutes? Recession for five minutes, that's the right word.
Has indicated a number of missing items and information to be considered a complete application. And we certainly recommend that the board defer acceptance and the public hearing until such time that those issues are taken care of. We would recommend that the board discuss conceptually at least some of the waiver requests and the issues regarding the site plan, and then continue the application moving forward to the January 4th meeting or the January 18th meeting, whichever the board feels more appropriate, given the length of discussion that's potential for this project and the one we just had. It may make sense for these to be on different evenings.
Thank you for that, Tim. All right. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at. First of all, thank you for hanging out till 10:00 PM with us.
We do what we have to do, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is David Moran. I am a real estate consultant with Berkshire Hathaway Verani Realty. I've been working with the applicant, who is Keith Pasquale, who is here in the audience today, for the last six months to both secure him a facility and to make sure he could operate his business at that location. As Mr. Thompson indicated, we were before this board back in June, and at that time we asked for a full waiver of a site plan. And again, it was based upon my investigations with what had preceded our interest in the property. And basically, I found that in 2017, that this site plan, which was the latest site plan available from the planning department, was used for a similar purpose. So based on that knowledge, I came before this board and asked for a waiver. It was during that initial meeting that was determined that there were a number of items on that original plan that had not been completed, and we agreed to continue that to July, during which time I worked with the planning staff to clean up as many issues as we could. And then we came back in July, presented that revised plan, and thankfully got approval from the board for our change of use. Again, the purpose for our meeting here is to get a change of use for this building. No other reason for us to be here. I would first like to apologize to the board and also to Mr. Doty, because I made a mistake. Back in June, when I was doing my compilation of the abutters list, let's say that the system isn't perfect, and what I picked up was the previous owner, which is Mr. Rulo. And he received a notice as opposed to Mr. Doty, who was the owner at that time. So again, I'm taking full responsibility. I missed it. I made a mistake. It became the basis for an appeal, and it brought us back here today to basically ask for the board's approval on the same thing we were here six months ago for. At our last meeting, I made a few comments and promises to this board. What I said is that we'll be back here again. And indeed, I really intended that we would. As a matter of fact, 30 days after submitting that plan and getting your approval, I went and submitted another application for a variance. Again, we're trying to do whatever we need to do to allow Mr. Pasquale to operate his business on this location. When I went to the planning board 30 days later, or the planning department 30 days later, what I was told is that they couldn't accept my application, that an appeal had been filed. So basically, we haven't been heard by the zoning board. We haven't been able to come back here to present our revised plan and move on with other improvements we plan to make to the property. In the interim, we've had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion. I've read more deeds than I really care to talk about. But basically, what we're here today, again, is to request your review and approval of an improved plan that shows exactly what the distinct conditions are on the site, and again, request your approval for a change of use. And with that, I'm going to pass the mic over to my associate, Mr. George Fredette, who will basically talk us through the plan.
Hi, my name is George Fredette with SFC Engineering Partnership. Happy to work with Dave and with KTK. At one, and one perspective on this is we are looking for a change of use. There are substantially no changes to the site, and I say that fully acknowledging we are showing some striping on there for parking. And we have, we have addressed the issue of drainage, and we propose an extension of the sewer. But as, as you look at just impervious cover and you look at the helicopter view of the site, there's effectively no changes. I have, I did receive the comments, seven pages of comments, and I offer no objection to them. They're, I don't mean to minimize them, but they're not going to change our design on the site. We will work with DPW just to clean up the notes on the sewer and the stormwater. In those notes, Mr. Best does suggest that I just get some guidance from you, because we did ask for some waivers. I want to introduce you to the waivers, and Mr. Chairman, if you want to just address them one at a time or as a whole, because my rationale, for the most part, is it's an existing site. It's out there today. We're just moving a new use into it. And with your permission, we ask for, we will be asking for a landscape waiver to find out if the planning board will determine if the existing vegetation is suitably located. In the front of the building, there is no vegetation. It's around the back of the building. I said there's almost no change to the site. You'll see that there's a, can we go to the, can you address that to the site, to the site plan, the third page? You'll see there's a couple islands that we're cutting in in the front.
There you go.
We're cutting in a couple islands in the front of the property, right at the right of way. Some of that's in the right of way. It cleans up the right of way a little bit, and those areas we can use for landscaping. Aside from that, I perceive it as an industrial area. It's at the end of the cul-de-sac and not warranting an investment in landscaping. May I ask for a comment on that, or should I just keep going, Mr. Chair?
If you want to discuss each of the items of potential waivers one at a time, that's up to you, whatever works best for you.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we set the table correctly, that we have not accepted the application as complete, and our willingness to entertain such waivers bears on the question of whether it's complete or not. And so if we wouldn't waive these items, then you're not complete and we're not ready to accept. And if we would waive them, well, at least there's some discussion to be had about whether we're complete, although maybe we're still short of complete on that. So we are not able to vote on waivers today, but we can give you sort of what our perception is about them.
That's definitely correct, and I'm not asking for a vote, just would you expect it to be reasonable?
Okay.
For a waiver on landscape, and there's six of them that I'm going to go through with you.
So let's pause with the landscape one. So the landscaping that you're, the islands that you mentioned are narrowing the driveway throat a little bit.
That's correct.
And the driveway is still, how wide is that? And what are, what are our regulations requiring for driveway width?
And that is another comment from Mr. Best.
I'm Mr. Best.
He measured it to be.
Mr. Price is that guy. I'm Best.
It's Price.
Thank you. And in his comments, he said it was 80 feet wide. I don't disagree.
Eighty? Eight zero?
Eight, eight, zero.
Okay. What does our regulations require for the width of a driveway?
I don't know the answer to that.
24 is typical, 36 typically with truck traffic.
Okay. So we're more than twice as wide, and, and so it's not unusual for us to encounter an old industrial site where the entire frontage is paved into a driveway like this. And our usual approach to them when we see them is get people to fix them and bring them into compliance, because we don't want the entire frontage to be a driveway. We want a fixed defined driveway, which could affect this landscape piece, because to do that, you would have to extend your landscape fingers quite a bit closer to each other.
To a point where it'd be unreasonable to access the site with a truck.
Well, 36 feet's certainly enough room to access with a truck, is it not?
It depends on what you're trying to do with the truck, I think. Okay? If you're trying to back into a dark or, it should be enough, but again, we're bringing up a lot of issues this evening that are unique to this site, and I think everyone will acknowledge that. If you'd like, I can show you pictures of several sites along the street that have no driveways at all. So basically, it's consistent with the site. So to suggest that we should restrict the driveway is really not reasonable.
Well, it's, it's, it's consistent with old sites that were developed either before regulations or, in some cases, developed in spite of regulations. It's not consistent with any of our site plan standards to have.
Understand, I understand that, Mr. Chairman. What I'm trying to understand, though, is this is an old site. So basically, the standards we're being held to should be consistent with the standards of an old site. We are not looking to recreate the wheel here, as we talked about at length at our last meeting. We have a 70-year-old building with an addition that was put in 40 years ago. We are at the end of a street. I'm not even sure if we're on a street, because I've heard different suggestions that the town doesn't, no longer maintains that section of Star Drive. So, you know, it's, it bears, it creates a lot of other questions rather than just whether we have landscaping or the width of the driveway.
I can't argue with that, although it's our job to untangle all those questions while we're here. When you were here in the summer, we were willing to offer some relief on an expedited basis, because that's what your client needed to come into town, but the promise to come back was to get all of these things cleaned up. And so that's why we're here, getting them cleaned up.
That was not my understanding at that time. My understanding is that I was coming back to clean up the site plan that I had presented, to show you what the existing conditions were of the site, so we could better evaluate any future changes to the use or occupancy of that building. So that's what I promised, and basically, that's what we've done. In addition, during that meeting, it was brought up by an abutter, there were some issues with water runoff from the site. So we took that seriously. Very next week, we started working on a stormwater mitigation plan. Okay? And literally.
So some of those are going to come up with the other, with the other waivers that you've asked us to provide some feedback on.
Absolutely. You know, and again, whether you want to take them one at a time, we need to understand what we're trying to accomplish here tonight, and, and what was promised and what was delivered, and to make sure that we're on the same page.
That makes sense. Tim, you have a comment?
Just again, to reiterate, when this was before the board back in the summer, staff did not support the waiver of full site plan review. Board approved the waiver of full site plan review against the recommendation of staff. Because this has been to Superior Court and is sent back, I strongly recommend again, you treat this like you've never seen it before, and it's a new application. What happened in the summer, well, it happened, isn't really relevant to the proceedings as were remanded back to us by Superior Court.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for that reminder. So whether, it's up to you to lead the discussion where you want it on the waivers, whether you want to do them one at a time or all at once. I'm willing to do whatever. As to, if we're pausing to talk about the landscape one, my comment on that is the driveway's got to be in compliance with our driveway regulations, or present a waiver and make the argument for why it shouldn't.
Okay.
And I don't know what the argument could be that suits the two statutory requirements for an 80-foot driveway width. It's actually quite difficult to safely control the traffic in and out of an 80-foot, because people can be coming in and out of the same driveway, parallel to each other, and potentially conflicting, or pulling in on a slant or an angle, or doing any number of things.
What's unusual about this is that 99% of the traffic is tractor-trailers, so actually, the wider, the better. But, but again.
Potentially so, but tractor-trailer drivers are actually quite brilliant at getting those suckers in where they don't fit.
They are pretty good, aren't they? I agree with you.
They could squeeze in between six inches of each other.
And, and again, we're more than willing to close up the driveway if it'll move this process along.
And, Mr. Chair, I think that you gave me the direction that I'm looking for. Just keeping going on that.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry?
Yes, please, proceed.
There's a waiver that we would intend on asking for, for a dumpster that was suggested, and the regulation says that we're going to soften the visual impact of trash disposal areas. I can do that, but in some, in some towns, that means put a fence around four sides of a dumpster. I don't think that we, we want to do that, but we'll certainly, we can work with landscaping, closing up the driveway and soften that effect. I think that would address the concern.
Let's talk about that a little bit, but before I do that, I realize that I was the only one that talked about landscaping, and I didn't give my board members a chance to offer their two cents if they want to on landscaping. What other landscaping requirements do our regulations require if we do not grant any waiver at all? Tim?
The current site would not comply at all with perimeter landscaping or internal landscaping requirements, if today's requirements were to be applied to it.
Okay. And that would require some landscaping, some certain number of trees?
It would require a certain number of trees around the perimeter based on the size of the lot, and would require, because technically, this is both a front and a side, between 8% and 10% internal parking lot landscaping.
All right. So there's no way to accomplish that on this site with what's sitting there today without tearing something down or tearing something out?
Yeah.
Other comments or questions about landscaping?
I agree with what you said.
With that in mind, I think getting the driveway fixed up with some islands that bring that together, and then doing as much as you can on this site from a landscaping standpoint, and I don't know what that is. Maybe that's only a couple of trees here and there, but do, do what you can to try to make the, the view from the road as appealing as it can be. Now, the second waiver that you're requesting, let's talk about that. Does any board members have comments?
Just for clarification, the waivers he's discussing right now have not been requested. They're items that staff has raised during the review that would require waivers, which is why we are not comfortable making recommendation of completeness.
Okay. What was the second waiver?
It was suggested screening for the dumpster, which is out front, and the regulation suggests softening the visual impact. We can do that with a fence on one side with perhaps some of these trees that we're talking about in the front.
Where's the dumpster?
I just want to make sure it doesn't mean fencing on all four sides. And I'm asking all of these questions because of my intention, that I'm going to deliver David a plan that he can bring here that is just all up to stuff. Boom, we're done. And that's our intention.
Is the dumpster drawn on your plan?
It's right on the front.
It's in the front, right near Star Drive.
Right on the street, yeah.
I got you. I certainly would, being able to see a dumpster area, like behind a fence or behind some shrubs, but knowing that that's where the dumpster is, I think is fine, but I shouldn't see, you know, green steel from the street. So however you accomplish that, in whatever creative way that you think works best, put it in the back corner of the lot, or put a fence around it, or put some shrubs around it. It doesn't have to be, you know, where nobody would ever know there's a dumpster there, but again, shouldn't be able to see, you know, Casella's label on the side of the dumpster.
Got you. There was a comment made that, on, on stormwater, and that's why David was here before, and that was an issue that had to be cleaned up. You'll read in the packet that in this particular case, there is no improvement that would correct it within, correct it to be clean. Stormwater right now comes off of that driveway and down Star Drive to that cul-de-sac, coming across cul-de-sac to the south side. There's nothing on that we can do because of the topography and the configuration to help that along. That was acknowledged by DPW. And so what we have done is we've done everything that we could to minimize the amount of stormwater vis-à-vis the two islands that you see, and we picked up the roof, the roof drain to route it to the side of the lot, rather than just coming right off into the pavement and following that route. In any event, the comment was made that, we've done that, I think there's consensus on it, but the comment was made that there's no drain, no prior drainage info on the site. What, what direction would you be giving me on that?
From the staff's perspective, my two cents on that is, we recognize that a full-blown drainage analysis for a site that's going to have minimal changes is overkill, but we would expect to at least have some narrative stamped letter from the engineers to explain what is proposed to go along with the, the improvement shown on the plan.
Thank you. I can work with that.
I'm, let's have a discussion. I may be a little more enthusiastic than the staff is. I think that even if it's been there for a long time, if you've been, been imposing on your neighbor's rights, that doesn't mean that it can keep doing that just because you've been doing it a long time. And at the same time, I want to be sympathetic to the idea that there's minimal, or you said none, but minimal changes to the, to the site.
Correct.
Board members, what do you guys think?
I don't see the drainage on this plan that we've got given to us.
Well, what you, what you see is true parallel lines going across the right of way. Yeah, who, you get to run that?
What, where would you like to go?
Sheet number?
I want that right there.
All right. Here you go.
Oh, my goodness.
You can even use the pointer.
About three or four, yeah. That's where I am, but.
Yeah.
Just go down. All you got to do is roll down.
So I see something drawn, proposed 10-foot wide drainage easement, but I don't know what that feature will do in terms of helping drainage.
Yeah.
That, that feature alone does not help drainage. That's the existing flow channel. That's where, where the flow is concentrated coming across that right of way. What we're doing to mitigate it is reduce the, the amount of flow coming off the site by reducing the impervious area, albeit a little bit. We're reducing the impervious area by the two little islands, which we're now going to expand a little bit more, and we're picking up the roof drainage, and we're routing that to the east side of the lot.
To the east side of the lot?
To the east side of the left, towards, towards the B and M Railroad.
Oh, eight-inch PVC?
There you go.
Yeah, okay.
Because the site is existing, we're, we're washing the dirty dog, is what we're doing, but we still have a dirty dog. And so we're, we're doing the best that we can to improve the site. And so my, my question was on understanding the comment from Mr. Price.
Well, you're, you're kind of doing the best you can, I mean, within the limits of what you feel like spending, but I mean, if you wanted to put in a catch basin or something in your driveway, you could do that.
We could do that, but then we don't have any place for it to go.
Yes.
Because of the elevations that we have, remember a catch basin, I'm dropping the water down three feet in the ground. Now what do I do with it? And so we're looking to infiltrate it, filter it, and detain it a bit by routing it instead of coming down right on, on the pavement, getting it into the grass area.
I, putting it in the grass areas, but where it is, but in terms of where would you route it from a catch basin, you can do those underground infiltration chambers that were in the plan that we saw earlier. You can do a bit of a drainage swale in here, and, you know, there's, there's some choices that I feel like you're not exercising. I don't, I'm not an engineer to be able to design all those for you, but I've certainly seen enough plans in 11 years to see what is possible when people are working at it. I, I don't blame you for approaching it this way, but it seems to be the simplest step you could take in hoping that it's good enough.
I'm looking for your comments so that I can come back and you endorse it. So if you're looking for infiltration, that's what we'll do. We have done a test pit out there. We didn't think the soils were good enough for infiltration, and I said in the grass here, we'll have more infiltration than we will on the, on the pavement. We'll have some filtering going on, and we'll at least slow down the, the rate of runoff a bit.
I'm cautious a little bit about me throwing out the idea of infiltration and you running with it, because I'm not a drainage engineer, and I don't want you to do it just because I said it. But let me understand, the proposed 10-foot wide drainage easement that goes diagonally across the cul-de-sac, is that drainage that flows over the asphalt across the road?
That's what it does today.
Yeah.
Okay. So whatever it takes to not sheet flow water off your site across the pavement to the other site is the goal? And I know that that's what it does today, and it may, maybe it's done it for 100 years, but that's still not a design standard. And I don't know how we would propose a 10-foot wide drainage easement over what has to be somebody else's property, who isn't before us and hasn't granted you an easement over whatever that is.
It's actually not someone else's property, it is town property. That's the road.
Well, true, but the town owns their property too, and it grants easements just like any other private property.
And that's why we are asking for a drainage easement. It's on the plan.
Yeah, we, but, but, planning board doesn't grant easements across town property or town right of ways. You'd have to see the town council to get rights to interfere with a town road, I suppose. Whatever it is, we don't do it.
I don't even know if it's a town road, Mr. Chairman.
It's a town road, but unless somebody changed it, and I don't think the town.
Well, it's not maintained by the town.
I, I, I just want to caution the board and everybody else that the ownership and rights and easements regarding public right of way out there are parts of the contention of the abutter who brought suit, so.
I, that's a good point.
It's, it's up in the air as to who has that, what it is, which is why the next item regarding the stamped and signed surveyed property boundaries, we are strongly recommending that the current relying upon the old reference plans is not sufficient because of the case involving that location of the Star Drive right of way.
Do you want to talk about that one?
Yeah. That's the one that we ought to hit.
Are we done talking about drainage? I mean, does anybody have a view of it?
What, what view would you like?
We can't grant them the right to run that water across the street like that.
I don't necessarily agree with the, the way that they propose to run all the roof leaders down out the back, over the railroad bed, or by the railroad bed either.
I don't have any, kind of a weird thing to say, but I don't have any, there's nowhere to put it. I mean, like you said, you can use a filtration basin or something like that, but I mean, that's definitely something you're going to have to speak to an engineer about, because I don't, just the way the site was created, there's, it's just a giant slab of pavement with a building on top of it.
Now, that's, there's still engineering solutions, but I don't know how to design one. I mean, I've certainly seen sites where they've untangled these challenges, but.
Can we talk about what the impact is? All right? Because I think that's tantamount to this discussion.
Sure.
What I pulled up on the screen is just a, an aerial that I got off of Google. Okay? This is, again, not the current situation, but as you can see, this section right here, it looks like a pond, or it looks like a puddle. That is where the water collects. Every storm, and we've had some massive storms this year, within a day, this is what you have left, a little wet area right here in the corner. All right? The way this was built, and we can talk about that in terms of who did what, when, but what happens is this water runs down a little swale here that was built, that in the, was intended to come around here to the corner, and this just go down along the railroad tracks. That's how it was designed. This road extension was actually built by PSNH. What I want to show you is. What I want to show you is that, um, through the wonders of the internet, all right, um, what I tried to determine over the last couple of weeks is what happened when? All right? Because we know that in nineteen eighty-two, Mr. Fletcher, who owned both parcels, did not build the swales that he had on the plan.
Both, would you say Mr. Fletcher, I don't know who he is, but you say he owned both parcels, but I don't know which two you're talking about.
Um, I'm talking about the parcel here, which is, um, three D one dash twelve.
Okay.
And across the street, three D one dash seven.
Okay.
All right? Um, if you'd like, I can bring up an old plan, but I just want to get through these three pictures. So you can see that as of two thousand and ten, no rainwater mitigation was done at all in this section. Okay? That basically the water came down off of Star Drive and just flowed right to the railroad track or dispersed as soon as it hit the grass. So that's the way it was from nineteen eighty-two to two thousand and ten.
Yeah, it was wrong for a long time.
All right. Um, in two thousand and twelve, I pulled the same map and again, this is New Hampshire granite, it's a wonderful site, but in two thousand and twelve, ah, there's a road. So I said to myself, where did that road come from and who built it? Okay? So I started to do a little bit more investigation and found out that that road was actually built by PSNH. And it was built by PSNH under the direction of Mr. Kalika. All right? Because I, I don't know if you know the history, but I think it's, it's important that you do understand that this whole situation here was changed by Mr. Kalika in two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and ten, he won a lawsuit against the B and M Railroad because he had, he owned the rights to a railroad crossing. And in two thousand and ten, they came to a, an agreement that B and M would give him a crossing at his designated location. At that time, even though Mr. Kalika owned this parcel, all right, he chose to put his crossing at the end of Star Drive. So B and M built a crossing. Then what Mr. Kalika did is he entered into a, a purchase and sale agreement with Power, uh, Public Services of New Hampshire to buy this parcel, which is three D dash one dash five. And this parcel right here in the corner that you see a piece of is where PSNH's power station is. So...
Excuse me, I'm Mr. Kalika.
Hang on a second. This is, there's no, this is a public park, but understood.
Kalika. Um, so, again, I have all the records, I can show you the, uh, deed references, I can show you the plans, actually have a copy of the PSNH plan, which I'm gonna call up next. And basically, PSNH came in with an understanding with Mr. Kalika that they would build this road and have access to the parcel. All right? So PSNH did build this road in two thousand and eleven. Okay? So if, if we go back to the nineteen sixty-two plan, George Fletcher's approved solution to the drainage was to actually build a swale right here, right across the roadway, from one of his parcels to the other parcel. He didn't do it. When B and M came in and put in their railroad crossing, there was still a chance to be able to do that. However, when PSNH came in and repaved the entire cul-de-sac and built this road, now they took out the opportunity for us to direct the water in the direction that Mother Nature wanted to go and where the town had originally approved for it to go back in nineteen eighty-two. Um, I'm gonna bring up one more because shortly after that, here's the two thousand and fifteen view of the same thing. Now, what happened is in nine, at two thousand and fourteen, uh, Mr. Kalika sold this parcel to Mr. Rouleau, and Mr. Rouleau was in the granite business. So Mr. Rouleau used this for storage of granite. And as you can see from this picture, and again, it's not a survey, so it's not exact, but I know that the road right-of-way, the town's right-of-way is fifty feet wide. I know that the road that PSNH built is twenty feet wide. So do the math. All of this concrete and other materials were dumped here, uh, by Mr. Rouleau, preventing the water from going its natural course, which it had done for the previous thirty I just want to bring up one more because I think it's pertinent and that's, I'm gonna bring up my... Please bear with me. I'm not seeing my plan. Okay. Do you have, um...
Um, a third of the way down. Is this the top of the list? Should be right in here. You're looking for this?
What I'm looking for is, no, the, oh, yeah, let's do that one. Ah. This is the plan that PSNH brought to the planning board that chose their, um, plans to repave this section of Star Drive, extend an apron twenty-five feet beyond what was considered to be the end of Star Drive, and then build a gravel access road across land that was, um, owned by CMI at the time, uh, but had easements with, uh, both, um, PSNH, CMI, and Mr. Kalika. So they had a three-party agreement that basically said that PSNH would build this road for their own access. So that was done in two thousand and eleven. As you can see, that road cut off any possibility of getting any drainage from the north side of Star Drive to the south side of Star Drive. I have, um...
So hang on a second, and I, you may, you may have other plans and if you...
Oh, I have lots of plans.
If you feel like we need to see them, then we'll certainly go through them, but, um, if there's been changes to ownership and rights and accesses and easements over the years, and I know that, uh, Mr., I don't know if it's Kalika or Kalika. Kalika views it differently than you do and I, it's not for us to try to settle the two of those. But if someone has bought or sold or impeded or intruded upon rights that existed when this site plan was done, um, you know, go to court and sort that out. From the planning board's standpoint, we've got a requirement that you deal with drainage in a particular way and how you do that's up to you. Um, if you aren't able to do it because someone built a road across what was supposed to be your drainage area, or you thought you had an easement in a particular place, we don't sort that out. I mean, that's not what we do. We don't, we don't take his side, we don't take your side.
And, and I'm not asking you to make a determination as to what's right or not.
No, but you want us to not hold you to the requirements of doing drainage the correct way based on, you know, a bunch of real estate transactions that have occurred in the past?
And also because it makes it, it's impossible to do drainage the way you're supposed to on the site.
No, it's, nothing's ever impossible.
I agree with you.
Not impossible.
It's not reasonable from a cost perspective to require that.
Reasonable and cost perspective and all of that is not necessarily a part of how a planning board regulates drainage requirements. Uh, if you're not, i- i- if doing the thing that you want to do on the property, um, doesn't suit what you want to spend on the property, uh, that's up to you. I mean, I, we owe you a review based on our regulations, but it isn't based on making sure that it suits your budget. I, I want to look for reasonable solutions and things, but you're steering me in a direction I just don't have any authority to go, to say, well, because somebody has intruded on your property rights, or they built a road, or they cut this off, or somebody, uh, sold it to somebody and they put some stone there and they impeded it, you know, if someone stepped on your rights, go sort that out.
Well, they weren't our rights at the time. Again, we, we purchased this property with, um, a set of expectations and understandings. And again, what we found was that others had taken actions in between that...
But none of those things were impossible to determine before you bought it. I mean, this is what I do for a living. I'm a part-time real estate lawyer and part-time healthcare lawyer. Um, you, you, this is why you do title searches on your property and see what, what's there and what's in, what's in the public record.
And we did. And again, I... What I don't really understand now is why we're being held to a different standard.
Oh, you're not. You're held to exactly the same standard as anybody else that comes before us.
But, but again, uh, there's, there's precedent for this site and the granting of a site plan waiver, a full site plan review, uh, and nothing's changed. We're not proposing any changes to the site whatsoever. All right? All we're here for is to talk about a change of use.
The site's been out of compliance, you said, since nineteen eighty-something. Um, and we're supposed to accept that it's out of compliance just because it's been that way for a long period of time. And I don't know of any legal principle that says...
No, but I think...
Being out of compliance gets better over, with age.
I think it's a reasonable request.
If you were not pushing water across the town's right-of-way, I'd at least have some room to consider that, but sheet-flowing water across the town's road, I don't think is something that we've ever accepted on any application anywhere as the standard course of things.
I would, um, I just want to make one point then, okay? Uh, all along Star Drive, there is no control over the water. All right? There is, there's actually, um, a bituminous, uh, curb, uh, along the hilly section coming down from the top of Route Three. Um, there have been, um, owners on the south side, um, that have put up, uh, concrete berms to keep the water off their properties. On the right side, there's open driveways that are dirt, that again, all slope from north to south. Um, there is no controls that I could see that the town has to control the water coming off of Route Three. That water travels over thirteen hundred feet. And, um, I have here, if you want to review them, elevations from, uh, um, the state that show that that elevation of the roadway is a hundred and sixty-six feet. And down here at the end of Star Drive, it's a hundred and forty-seven feet. So we're dropping thirty-five feet and thirteen hundred feet with no control over the flow of water. So I have over an acre of pavement that is washing down Star Drive unimpeded into this cul-de-sac. I can't fix that.
Nobody's asking you to fix that.
Yes, you are.
I want you to fix what's coming from your site into the cul-de-sac.
And I'm doing my best to do that.
Okay, but tell me a story about what's coming off of DW Highway down the road and why you can't fix that. Nobody's asked you to fix that and, and I haven't pointed anything here. I'm saying control what's flowing off of your site onto the road.
Okay.
Um, I appreciate that Star Drive is a mess, that there's o- other industrial sort of, um, uh, sites, uh, streets, uh, areas of town where sites have developed either over time with no regulation, prior to regulation, and again, in spite of regulation, your site's one of them. Uh, so the, the fact that there's neighbors doesn't mean that we as a planning board should just sort of toss up our hands and say it is what it is. Um, at some level, you gotta say, okay, when the sites come before us, the person's gonna be responsible for fixing whatever piece of it they own, um, and that's the only way this ever gets better. Otherwise, Star Drive is always what you complain about today, which is uncontrolled. We can't go down there right now with, with no applications in front of us and grab up all the people up and down both sides of the road and say, uh, submit us a plan to fix what's going on here. Uh, but as they come before a planning board, we can and we could, we have. Uh, and frankly, one of the reasons why Mr. Ross was so hot at us, uh, earlier today was because he had that happen to him, one on Star Drive, but, um, fixing drainage that he didn't want to fix. Sorry about that. That's, I, I'll stop talking. Planning Board members, what do you guys think? Am I nuts? Am I out on a limb? What, you want to see this differently?
I think you're right on. I think you're right on.
I, I agree with what you're saying. Um, I think they ought to take a shot and figure out what they can do. If they can't do anything, then they can come and ask for a trade.
I'm with you. A hundred percent.
I don't think your microphone's on, Tom.
You're right. I'm sorry. I agree with what you're saying. I think they should, should make every effort to follow the regulations and stop the drainage from coming off their property. Whether that means something special to get rid of it rather than running it down south onto some other property, that's what ought to happen. If it can't, if it, if it absolutely can't be done, then maybe can come back and ask for a waiver and we can discuss it then.
I know the perspective from Public Works and Engineering has been that understand that the site was not built compliant with the original plan, but to get some level of improvement to the rate of runoff off the property is ultimately, I think, what their goal is. And I think if the board is going to require the narrowing of that driveway throat significantly from the eighty-plus feet that it is now, that's gonna go a fair amount of way towards assisting with that, reducing the rate of runoff. And if you're creating those driveway throats, you have a way of potentially directing the drainage elsewhere rather than having it sheet-flow right up to the cul-de-sac.
I agree with that observation. All right? And I, again, I think that at this point, um, we've gotten the message. Uh, we gotta go back, we gotta make some more changes to this, we gotta do our best to comply, uh, the best we can.
So, uh, thank you for acknowledging that and I didn't mean to beat you up maybe as much as I did, but...
It's okay. I'm a big boy.
The, the waiver for the wa- waiving the surveyor stamp though, um, you're not gonna love me on this one either. Um, with all that's gone on with this street and all the arguments about who does what and as we sit here with Mr. Kalika, even as you're going down the review of your things, um, I don't know that it makes any sense at all, whether we want to or not, I don't think it makes any sense at all to not have this surveyed and sorted out, um, as a part of the, the review that we're doing here.
Well, let me ask this question. Obviously, as you can see from this plan that PSNH did, um, they did an exhaustive survey and obviously all of their meets and bounds and everything else would be more up to date. And to be honest with you, this plan only came to my attention last week because I finally asked the question, who built that road? Okay? And this is one of the frustrations and I understand, um, there was no, this has been going on for fifteen years in this town, this battle between Mr. Kalika and B and M Railroad and everyone else. All right? It would have been nice if someone had said to us in advance, hey, you know, there's problems down there. Maybe you shouldn't go there. All right? Because obviously everybody in the planning department knew that there were issues. No communication. They knew that this plan existed. You think someone said, oh, we got a more current plan than that? Why don't you look at this? This is thirty, twenty-three pages of plans that PSNH did. I bet they did an exhaustive plan. If you'd like, we'll get that twenty-three pages down.
I, I, I appreciate that and frankly, to the extent that you gotta get a surveyor, that's what surveyors do is they find a reference plan and here's a perfectly good, relatively recent reference plan.
And we will use this reference plan because it clearly is more recent.
Yeah, and there'll be some notes somewhere on here that says what reference plans they used to create that one. I get that. As far as the community development department telling or not telling or whatever, I mean, I don't think it's the town's obligation.
Yeah, I know. It's funny like that. You're absolutely correct.
We hire people to go look at their...
And I understand. And, you know, again, I, I'm just caught up in old, old way of thinking.
I, I do want to push back on that, that proposition that somehow, uh, the town or the proverbial they owe somebody some obligation to look out for them.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to imply that. I'm just saying that, that it's been a, a process of discovery since the lawsuit was filed and all these issues have come up, of trying to figure out who's responsible for what down here.
Um, I, I, I agree with that. Um, and again, I don't want to sort of keep saying, you know, there's another way to do it, but i- if I was asked to figure out the boundaries or the, the rights of a piece of property, um, trying to see if there's any plans on record for the abutting parcels is pretty close to the first or second step. I mean, is it not? I mean, it's...
Uh, well, you understand, again, the constraints we were dealing with, uh, in the past. And again, I want to thank this board for being understanding about the situation we were in back in July. And, and, and again, I promised you then, all we want to do is try to make this site better and that's all we've been trying to do since we started. We, we, we worked with, um, the fire department, the building department, we've improved the building substantially, um, we are in compliance as far as all of that is concerned. Again, we're... Again, we're, we're dealing with issues that really are bigger than we are, and we're trying to do our best.
Just in an effort to defend my department and my staff, we recommended a full site plan back in the summer.
Absolutely.
Thank you again for jabbing.
You are absolutely correct.
We get that. Um, now, so let, let's get this surveyed and, and have that be a part of the presentation as well so that we've got something we can rely on. I know that there's gonna be disputes, uh, uh, from, uh, Mr. Kalika about his view of things, but.
That's why you get a surveyor, though.
That's why you get a surveyor involved, and if he has a surveyor that says something different, you know, we could, uh, decide what we do with that information.
Oh, I don't think there's any issues with Mr. Kalika and the, the lot itself. I think all of his issues are off-site.
Let me interrupt you for just one second. Um, he's indicated that he pronounces his name Kalika.
Oh, sorry. That's all right. You refer to me as David Moran, but that's okay. Nothing personal.
I, I've been called lots of things as well, but I try to pronounce people's names the way that they've asked me to.
I haven't been asked, sorry.
With that in mind, what other waivers do we have besides the other ones that we've already spoken to?
At this point, we're gonna defer to our next meeting. All right, we don't, we don't want to take up any more of your time. Look, it's late, everybody wants to go home. Uh, we could beat this to death, but what I understand from your comments right now is that you are not gonna accept this plan. And based upon the feedback that you've given us, thank you, uh, we will go back and, and make some revisions to the plan and hopefully come with, to you with something that would be acceptable.
If we're doing a continuance, I would recommend the eighteenth of January, again, to separate this from the Ross project. I, I understand it's an extra two weeks, but for, otherwise, we're gonna be sitting here at eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock at that meeting as well, I, I fear. Mr. Ross will be coming back on the fourth.
Okay, uh, what's the will of the board on a continuance? Or whatever, anything else? Do you have something else on mind?
Well, I was just curious what the other, what they're gonna be asking for, for waivers when they come back, so maybe we can give them some insight now.
The other waivers that are in the memo are architectural renderings, which existing building, no changes, we don't have a particular issue with. Illumination plan, they're not proposing any new lighting, no issue there. And then the traffic impact analysis, they're asking for a waiver, but as we always mentioned, the information you need to justify the waiver is essentially a short analysis. Please provide the short analysis.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Neil. Does that make sense to you guys? What Tim just went over for those other waivers?
Yeah, we'll go with that.
Didn't ask you about your soils. I don't know if we could find any soil on the site.
I don't think there's much. It's mostly railroad gravel.
It's all paved over. Nelson, wasn't this under your supervision back in the whatever they? Weren't you the planning board chair way back? Nelson has been on the board now probably forty-plus years.
Yeah, I know. He signed up planning in eighty-two.
Just to put it in perspective, Nelson started the board when I was five.
The, the board is aware that, that, um, the court is having a, a continuance hearing on December twentieth to judge the merits of Mr. Kalika, Kalika, uh, his claims. And again, I would, hopefully. Oh, that has been stayed now?
That has been stayed pending the results of this.
Okay, thank you for, uh, attempting to share with the latest knowledge. I guess we've got a little bit more updates.
Everyone up to speed.
I appreciate that. Um, I would assume that if the court wanted us to do something different than we would normally do, they would've told us. Okay, so.
So move continuance to January nineteenth?
Eighteenth or nineteenth, was it?
Eighteenth. The memo's incorrect, I'm sorry.
Continuance to the eighteenth with no further notice.
No further notice to a butters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero. We'll see you in a little over a month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done research this.
That's a lot of research to figure this out. It's not easy. Um, item twelve on our agenda is the John Flatley Company as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a, of final approval for a lot line adjustment to increase the area of map six E, lot three, seven, and a site plan to construct two forty-eight unit apartment buildings. Gentlemen, would you do me the favor of having the conversation in the hallway? Thank you. Uh, to construct two forty-eight unit apartment buildings in addition to the existing two-hundred-and-forty units, both in accordance with the most recently amended flatly mixed-use conditional use permit. The parcels are located at five Gilbert Crossing at, and six forty-five Daniel Webster Highway in the I-one industrial, aqua conservation, and elderly housing overlay districts and wellhead protection area. Tax map six E, lot three-one, six forty-five DW Highway, and three-seven, which is five Gilbert Crossing. It's case planning board twenty-twenty-one dash forty-four. Tim, I think we've got a continuance.
We do at the last minute. We did receive a continuance request from Fieldstone to the January fourth agenda. I will note that the, one of the comments that we have as staff is they're basically have intertwined a site plan and a lot line adjustment. Those must be separated per regulation, so there will be two applications. They will have to renotice the lot line adjustment separately from the site plan as this moves forward.
So do we continue it with no further notice to a butter, or do we?
I would say you can continue it with no further notice to a butters for the site plan portion of the application.
Okay, so we consider this to be the site plan proposal, and we continue it if that's the will of the board with no further notice to butters?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to continue to January fourth with no further notice to a butters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
One abstaining. Okay. Um, actually, I abstain on flatly stuff too, so I will abstain as well. Three O two. It still passes. Uh, with that in mind, we are up to discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. I feel like there's a handful of little details. Is that what this paperclip full of?
Extra stuff is, yeah.
There's extra stuff. Uh, before I do this, I would like to entertain to the planning board that you consider allowing us to add a consent agenda portion to the, to the planning board's agendas, where if we have non-controversial requests for continuances, bond reductions, and other administrative work of the board, we can do them all in one fell swoop in one motion without the need to go through a long, lengthy discussion. Uh, I know the town council utilizes that in their operations for simple items that, uh, generally don't require discussion. Otherwise, we are stuck with doing six extension requests and a bond reduction establishment, uh, individually at this point of the meeting. But it's just something I throw out there for the board to consider. I think it would certainly help streamline some of the longer nights where we have a bunch of these things.
I, I agree with the suggestion. I love the idea. I've suggested it in other opportunities when I've had the chance to do so. Generally speaking, for those that are concerned about it, the rule with a consent agenda is anybody that wants to talk about an item on the consent agenda can pull it off.
Correct.
So any member of the board who says number three on the consent agenda I want to talk about, it comes off the consent agenda. We deal with it, regular business. Um, but the consent agenda is, um, you know, things that everybody sort of has the sense that doesn't have any controversy on it. Um, the only follow-up I have to my comment, Tim, I would assume that such a thing is regulated in our bylaws.
Procedures, yes. So I would, uh, we would have to do a special meeting to read, adopt that into the rules of procedure outside of our annual meeting if the board so chooses to do.
As long as there's a opportunity to do so outside of our annual meeting, I want to do so at our next meeting. Um, so let's, are you guys willing to do the consent agenda item? Do you like the idea?
I don't like the idea, but to be honest, I don't think it takes that much time for the few things we have that fall on that. And, uh, you know what you're voting on, and the public knows what we're voting on, and so I would like to keep it the way we've done it. That would be my suggestion.
Um, other comments by other board members?
Actually, I kind of.
Yeah, I think I feel the same way as Nelson. I, and, um, maybe just because I'm a little unclear exactly of what.
For example, for example, I have a stack of requests for continuance or extensions to projects that have, are approaching their deadline to meet conditions of approval, but for various reasons outside their control, state permits, uh, other items, reviews that haven't been completed, they need to come to the board to request extension to the date on their approvals. So what I'm suggesting is that rather than individually going through and reading every specific project, you would be provided each of those in advance as part of your packet, as part of the consent agenda, and as long as you're comfortable with each of the things that staff recommends, you take one motion and dispose of them all in one, at one time.
So we would still receive the, um.
You would still receive.
We'd still receive the information, and we, we would still have the, uh, the opportunity to pull it out.
Honestly, it will, it will eliminate what's happened here, which is because these aren't typically agended items, they end up thrown on the last item of other items of concern, and I have to scramble the day of the meeting to add things that are coming in. If they have to be on a consent agenda, then they have to be in before the packets go out, and it prevents this kind of stuff from happening.
So for example, these are the items that we're gonna consider here in a little bit. Bowers Landing wants to continue their, their.
Extension, yep.
Extend their time to complete the conditions of approval by six months, uh, and they offer some explanation about why they're slowed down a little bit. Vaughn and Clark Lot Line Adjustment, they also want a, uh, extension for their conditions of approval. They didn't specify how long they want. Um, the third one, Gordon House Site Plan, please email request for extension of the conditional approval for the above-referenced project. We're waiting on final architectural plans. Fourth one, Kevin Walker from Flatley, please email request for extension of conditional approval of the above-referenced project. We're waiting on the DOT permitting for this project. Fifth one, is she and Finney, planning board granted conditional final approval on June sixteenth. They want an extension of six months. I don't even know what this one's for.
That's the gas station at Continental.
Yes, where the canopy is now gone, but instruction has now started.
That was required by the state.
And then, um.
For what?
To take the canopy down.
Really?
Yeah, and that, they have to be full service because of that now.
What is the canopy doing?
There was, there was an issue with the canopy and suppression system and, yeah.
So would this just pertain to extensions?
Uh, it could, but there could be other things.
Decisions, and I have, I have a little bit of a, a question about that, actually.
So, it doesn't change something that we would normally approve and make it a staff approval or make a staff approval into a planning board approval. If the staff has the authority to deal with it on their own, they can do that now, they can do that later, they can tell us about it, they can, whatever, we can ask them to do. These are things that we would normally vote on, and instead of voting on them one at a time as we're about to do with six different motions, you'd have one, a consent agenda where they'd all be listed. Maybe you put your minutes on there if you want to put your minutes on the consent agenda. Maybe these, um, these reports at the beginning of every meeting to decide what's of regional impact, those could be on the consent agenda. And then one motion, I approve everything on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. If there's any of those items, no matter how simple they are, where somebody says, hey, I want to talk about the regional impact, I think there's a question to be had here. Off, automatic. There's no vote on taking it off, it's off.
Understood. Yeah, thank you for that explanation.
Um, and, uh, generally what it does is just those things that we don't choose to talk about, you can vote on all at once.
Minutes, although minutes probably keeps that better.
Yeah, I, I know a lot of places do their minutes that way, but you can still pull them off if you decide they need an edit or somebody didn't include me when I showed up at the meeting or something.
In addition to those six, there's also a request to establish a bond and reduce a bond that I have for you tonight as well.
Yep, um, those are another one, where sometimes those are noffens, and we just want to let them go and get out of here at eleven P M. And sometimes they're somethings. We're not leaving at eleven, by the way, 'cause we haven't ranked all the CIP stuff. Uh, CIP.
Anyway, just wanted to throw that out there. If I have a consensus, we'll move forward with a change of the, to the rules of procedure. If not, we'll just continue the way we do it.
So, uh, Nelson indicated he didn't want to have that. I want it, uh, Neil, I'm not sure whether you, where you're at.
Nah, I think that I'd be comfortable with that, as long as we can see it and have a.
Like I said, you'll get them in advance now, which you're currently not. It's actually, we'll make things, it puts a deadline on other people that right now they don't have.
Yeah, absolutely. Whoever would care about whether ultimate bimmer is gonna get their six-month extension has no idea we're about to decide it here tonight, 'cause it's not on an agenda. Only people that know about, so if somebody was saying, hey, don't give that to them, are there something more you should know? Absolutely in the dark on it, uh, the way that it's happening now. Um, anyway.
So, but if it goes on the consent agenda, are you gonna put it, are you gonna list what's on the consent agenda on the agenda?
Yes.
And, and send it to us on Friday, in our Friday packet?
No, I understand. I'm just wondering if that's feasible. I mean, these things come in at last minute, so if somebody comes in and they need to find their six.
We won't allow them to, because we'll be making a change of the rules of procedure. We'll be part of the deadline.
Does that, does that make you feel better?
Yes, it does. I feel much better after this discussion. I didn't quite understand how things got on and got off. And I think with this, this kind of a procedure that we've talked about, I have no objection.
Just as an example, Concord's planning board has a consent agenda every month because I'm actually a member of their architectural design review committee, and we make recommendations on everything from sign design to architectural things that all get put on a consent agenda that the board, the planning board just votes in one fell swoop unless things get pulled off by the board members individually.
And, you know, as planning boards go, we're, our docket, we've used up forty-four docket numbers this year, um, as of tonight. Um, that's a lot of work for a planning board. It's, you know, uh, two meetings a month.
That doesn't count the numbers that get repeated for continuances.
Yeah, well, of, of course, yeah, they, they certainly do get repeated.
Believe me, if you ever, if you follow my Twitter account, at the end of every year, you'll get an idea of how many different items we have on our agendas. Tom will hear it in my budget presentation in a few weeks.
Great. Okay, uh, so we don't have a consent agenda tonight, so we've gotta tackle, tackle these things one at a time.
But it sounds like people are generally in a, in favor of the idea.
Consensus I heard.
Okay. Yeah, and we can see what that language looks like in our, was it rules of procedure or bylaws?
Yes, rules of procedure. It's rules of procedure is the terminology we would change a few years ago.
Yeah, I don't think that it, there was ever a.
It was a statutory thing.
Concept of a bylaw for a public board, but anyway, okay. Um, in no particular order, let's start with, uh, an email that I'm holding from Matt Peterson related to Bowers Landing, struggling to get Dawn's sign-off on the sewer permit. I'm hoping we're almost there. However, I think I need to ask another six-month extension. Is that something you could put on the next agenda for us? Thanks and enjoy the day. So when do they expire and when would six months get them? Tim, do you know?
You would have to tell us. I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Maybe we don't care. I don't know.
It's, yeah.
He requested it back on November third.
Yeah. It's, I believe everything that's on your agenda to date is either technically expired because we didn't have a second meeting in November, expired in November, or is set to expire during the month of December. So we are comfortable as staff with a six-month extension.
What's the will of the board?
Move approval.
Move to approve.
The six-month, second by Neil, right?
I heard a motion from Tom and a second.
From Tom and then the second.
I'll give Nelson the second.
Whatever Tim wrote down. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero. Uh, second one is, uh, a November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one letter from T F Moran from Jeffrey Kevin regarding one oh-six Herrick Street Ultimate Bimmer. Uh, the conditions of approval granted on December fifteenth, twenty-twenty is due to expire on December one, twenty-twenty-one.
It's actually December fifteenth. It's a typo.
Okay. Oh, good. Uh, situation, it's been timelier than expected to communicate and coordinate the conditions of approval within the departments. I don't know what that means, 'cause that sounds faster.
A lot of engineering stuff that needs to be resolved.
Yeah, but timelier than expected, sounds like it's faster, but anyway. Therefore, the precedent conditions for approval are still in process and will likely exceed the expiration date. We would like to respectfully request an extension of this approval to allow for the completion. Six months?
Six months.
What's the will of the board? Move for six months, second by Counsel Koenig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six months for Herrick Street. Uh, next one is PMG Northeast LLC. This is a letter from the law firm of She and Finney, November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. As you know, the planning board granted conditional final approval on June sixteenth, twenty-twenty, subject to certain conditions. On each of December one, twenty-twenty, and June twenty-one, the board granted six-month extensions. The applicant has been working to complete all the required conditions and currently has satisfied all conditions except for receipt of all required state approvals and permits. Specifically, the applicant submitted its application for underground storage tanks to the Department of Environmental Services, but has not yet received state approval. Accordingly, the applicant respectfully requests the extension. Courtney Hers is the attorney. Um, what did she say? Six months? Didn't say six months. Six months, Tim?
Six months.
Six months, yeah.
They, they put in their state request back in June of twenty-twenty, and they still have not heard back a year and a half.
Yes.
Wow.
DES is mostly remote, working at home these days.
Well, I know.
Permitting with the state is ridiculously slow right now. It's gonna be the same thing when we get to Flatley. Flat, the DOT's had their driveway permit for over a year.
Yeah, DOT needs a legislative change to say if you don't make your timeline, it's approved, the way they used to with the shoreline permits.
All right, so we got six months. I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero. Uh, the, the next one, whichever number we're up to, here is. The next one, whichever number we're up to here, is from Kevin Walker of Flatley for their flex site. And again, their DOT permit is not in hand, so they are looking for an extension of conditional approvals. They didn't say how many months?
Six months.
Six months?
Give him six.
Who has the motion?
I'll move.
Who's the second?
I'll second.
Whatever Tim wrote down, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, five zero zero for that one. The next one is Gordon House Site Plan. What's Gordon House?
That's the assisted living in the old Levi walls.
Oh, really?
Yep.
I thought they withdrew that one. Please let's email service request for extension of conditional approval above referenced project. We're waiting on final architectural plans for the project to satisfy the remaining conditions of approval. Six months?
Yep.
So move.
Second, moved, second by Nelson, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, six zero zero, five zero zero. Last one of this stack is the Vaughn Clark Lot Line Adjustment. They requested extension due to pending easement language completion and review.
Six months.
Is there a motion to grant six month extension?
For a lot line adjustment?
This time it's the attorneys that are holding them up notice.
Well, that's part of our job, nobody pays you to be quick.
Nobody pays you to be quick.
Well, no, it's easy now, I'm just
Did somebody already?
Who had the motion?
I thought someone did.
Motion to grant six month extension.
I'll, I'll move it.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Nelson, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, five zero zero. Okay, now we've got to, is that all of those things?
Yeah, that's all of them.
We've got the memo from Dawn regarding Chestnut Hill Properties.
Oh, the bond one.
This would be the establishment of the initial bond, performance bond of 4.253 million, sufficient to complete all the improvements. Then based on the amount of work that has been done, they are recommending a bond reduction to 1.594 million and change, sufficient to cover the remaining work. So we need a motion first to accept the establishment of the performance bond at 4.25 million and then a second motion to reduce to the 1.593.
Okay, will someone make a motion to approve a performance bond in the amount specified in the memo so that you don't have to read all the numbers? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, five zero zero? Is there a motion to reduce it to the amount indicated in Dawn's memo?
So move.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, five zero zero for that one?
Thank you.
Okay.
CIP.
It's this one from Brian Dano of
That's, that is, that's the continuance for Flatley.
It's like a
We already voted on that.
Yeah, sorry.
Brian, that's just your copy of the appointment. Brian Dano was appointed by the town council as an alternate of the planning board. Unfortunately, he's on the West Coast for work right now and was unable to make it tonight for his first meeting.
Okay, this appointment says full member.
Oh, full member, I apologize. I will note that, yes, that's true.
I was unable to get to his interview process because of traveling.
It's filling Alastair's position, so yes, it is a full.
Okay, I look forward to meet him.
So do I.
Nice guy. No, I was traveling in Alabama when they did his interview, so I couldn't do it. And I think we checked and you couldn't do it either, so. Okay, Tim, what's next?
Next is town CIP priorities.
Oh geez, I forgot about that.
That's why I recommended we do it early in the night.
No, I know, but I wouldn't want those people still sitting here. It's after 11:00, somebody would not get their thing voted on.
How angry they'd be now. Well, we might have spoken to Chris Ross just a little bit less.
Do you want, Bob, Paul McCallie did give me the spreadsheet with the priorities from last year, if you'd like that for reference?
Yeah, do you want to hold it and kind of talk us through it or you want me to do that?
Maybe just talk us through it as we get down them one by one, just say what we did last year.
Let's start with public safety complex. Last year was a priority two necessary.
Is that even on here?
Has the plan for that changed?
Oh, looking at the wrong one. He said that was the only one that changed, we're going to push it another year.
That might get pushed, yes.
Yeah, that was the only thing he updated us on.
That might get pushed from where it is on the chart he gave?
From 2021, 22 to 22, 23.
Most likely. Well, that's where it is on the chart.
Well, it's 22, 23 on my chart, which is
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm switching between the two, I apologize. It was moved last time, it might get moved again when he presents to the council next week.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're not, they're not ready to
We don't have the land yet, I believe is the main issue.
We don't have the land.
That's my understanding is we're still
We don't haven't identified a spot that we can do it on yet.
Yeah.
Well, that's step one.
I would think, yeah. So, priority two?
We're trying.
It was priority two last time?
It was priority two last time, yes.
Okay, priority two is necessary.
Necessary within three years.
Okay.
So we'll leave it as two, right?
Okay.
I assume we're doing this by consensus and I don't need motions on all these until the end?
Yeah, let's do it all, let's do all our numbers, then we'll vote on it once.
I'm sorry, did we skip one?
Number one, the fire location study?
That actually was last year.
Okay.
That's why I skipped that.
That's currently in there.
That's already done.
That's today's.
Next is South Fire Station, which last year was priority two, necessary within three years.
Any changes to that, gentlemen?
We would be, I don't care.
Hearing none. Number four is the admin engineering bridge replacement of US 3 over Babusik Brook.
That was priority two.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Number five on the list is bridge rehabilitation, US 3 W Highway, Sahigan River at Chamberlain Bridge.
Priority two.
Any changes? Okay, no. Stormwater drainage improvements and permit compliance.
Priority two.
And that was $250,000 a year forever? No, it's a progressively higher number, but it's priority two?
Yeah.
Okay, sidewalks.
Priority two.
No. That's $200,000 next year is the priority.
Yeah.
Okay. Woodland drive area drainage improvements, Deerwood, Birchwood, Pine Tree, Fernwood, Forest, Hartwood and Timber.
Priority two.
That was a two?
Yep.
Happy with that, if you guys are.
Was anything other than a two?
The only ones that weren't twos, if you want to do it that way.
Yeah, look at that.
Sidewalk improvements, tap grant, which I don't believe is in here anymore.
It wasn't in there last year. This is just added.
There's a 16, number 16 on the display.
It was 16 last year. Sidewalk improvements, tap grant, application pending award of grant.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
16 is that this time.
DW Highway sidewalk improvements.
That was, that was a three for desirable.
I think that should be a two.
All right, well, let's talk about, so everything else on the list was two and there's no new things?
The other ones that we had was the new athletic field placeholder was desirable.
Where's that?
Very
28?
Parks and Rec, 28.
Was desirable, was desirable three or four?
Three is desirable.
Needed within four to six years to improve quality of level of service.
Given its placement, it was still applicable.
How about all the wastewater ones, were those all?
Wastewater were all twos.
Okay.
Library?
Libraries were all twos. There was literally only the two desirables, everything else was necessary last year. Actually, I take it back, there's three desirables. There was the Merrimack, the boat ramp was also desirable.
The riverboat ramp?
Yep, the riverboat ramp.
What number is that?
Depot Street repairs?
13. It was 13, it was 14 last year, it's 13 this year. The Merrimack River Boat Ramp improvements, that was a three last year.
Access improvements, but it's way down at the end of the thing here.
Now that it's moved out, I'd say, I'd say a three.
I don't think we have the wherewithal or know how to do that.
So do you want to call it deferrable or premature?
No.
Okay, keep it a three?
So maybe that's a way to sort this out. We can just repeat what we did last year, but we can also look at the timeframes that are here. And if it's within three years, it can be a two. And if it's after three years, it can't be any higher than a three. If we're expecting these timeframes.
I mean, just because it got pushed out there doesn't mean we don't need it.
That's true, although desirable
You're still suggesting that it'd be great if we could bring it.
If we keep giving it the same rating, you'll never get to it.
The definition though, even though it's called desirable, says needed within four to six years to improve quality or level of service.
Necessary is within three.
Also says needed.
Fine, I, I don't care, it's going to come to me again, I'm not going to vote on this one.
Well, and, you know, that's, another point is, let's not wrestle over this since nobody gives a crap over its score anyway. I don't know, maybe I shouldn't be
The town manager and I have discussed making significant changes to the CIP process because it's, it's broken.
It's worthy of change.
It needs, the CIP discussions need to be taking place in the summer with a separate CIP committee that's dedicated to going through and putting this stuff together and explaining exactly why these things are important and then coming to the planning board and then dealing with the school board, town council and MVD.
And get the water district in the boat, too.
I, I, I will, I will say this, that the fact that we actually had an MVD CIP presentation this year, it's the first time I can think of in at least six years that we've had one.
I can't remember when, how long it's been since we've had one, but I know that we always tell them, go find some more water.
In the district's defense, there's a lot going on. And he did have the CIP, so.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll take it, I'm not going to look for something else. Okay, let's get, so
I want to say one thing before we vote.
The CIP is used, it actually is budgeted based on that, or at least we're beat up about it.
Yes.
Budget wise, based on being able to fund these kinds of projects over these periods of years.
It's a really important planning tool that I think is underutilized.
But it's hard to believe anybody pays attention.
Yep. So, what looks like we did last year is that item number 13, 16 and 28 were number threes, everything else was a number two? Is that the will of the board this year? For someone to make a motion to that effect? Or do we want to tweak some of these?
I wanted to talk to one of them.
Okay.
I wanted to talk to the, it's item number seven and it's the, the sidewalks in the town center area. Our recommendation, by ours, I mean the town center committee has recommended that that number be continued for a number of years, for I think the next four years anyway, at $200,000 a year for four years, so that we can build more pieces of the sidewalk in the town center. And, and it doesn't, it isn't showing up here. Last year, it was, originally it was, two years ago, it was in the plan like that. And then the council voted to take it out and just put it in for one, put it in for this one year, or it looks like they're putting it back in this year. Last year, they took it out and zeroed everything. And this year, they put it back in for just one year. And I would like to recommend to the council and others in higher places that they leave the 200 every year. That's separate from what we're doing here now with the number reading, but I wanted to put that on the table.
Okay, let's talk it through. Tim, what was there last year? $200,000 in the 22, 33 year?
Last year, there was multiple years throughout the entire program.
So when we voted on it last year, there was every year $200,000?
Oh, yeah, when we voted on it, but then the
Again, this is being an advisory document.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Well, it doesn't mean It doesn't mean, we just didn't fund it that year.
Yeah.
And I don't know why Paul only put it in for 200,000 this year or next year.
Well
I think you can add in your memo and say, please consider every year further out.
Yes.
That was my intention was to leave it in there, but that year I wanted to pull it out.
Okay, well.
So I, I like the idea of having a regularly funded amount for sidewalks. The number happens to be about 20% of the annual amount that we spend on all paving. Is that, on, on the annual, we've spent about a million dollars in the line nine, just regular, ordinary paving. And spending 200 a year on sidewalks when we spend a million on all roads seems like a lot.
Well, we end up spending more than a million, but that's all that comes out of the CIP. I think it's more like one and a half.
You know, there's a couple of other line items in here that deal with paving and certain kinds of paving and things, but that one that repeats every year, year in and year out is line nine, which has two lines in it.
Part of it's the registration fee for your car and the other part is a budgetary lineup.
Yeah, I mean, line 10 is paving, line 11 is paving. And so there are other opportunities to paving, but I loved the idea that we were doing paving on a regular basis with a certain amount and it was, you know, a maintenance plan. And I love the idea of doing that with sidewalks. But as to the two proportionally, is sidewalks a $200,000 spend?
Yeah, of what we spend on. But sidewalks are being installed versus streets are just being repaved and maintained at this rate. If we keep it up, with the million plus, a million two or whatever it is, then we have a better chance of staying on top of the roads and keeping them, not having to dig about completely. And with sidewalks, we're talking about having to completely
Yep.
We're talking about having to completely restructure, construct the sidewalks.
It's base materials.
Base materials and everything else.
It includes, in some cases, land acquisition.
Exactly.
Where we don't own them.
And DOT approval and every other darn thing, so.
Oh, we don't, don't go there.
That's why we have a sidewalk master plan, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, I think on the table right now is all priorities mimicking what they were last year, with the recommendation that the sidewalk line item number seven be added to the memo that the planning board recommends the two hundred thousand dollar contribution to the road infrastructure capital reserve fund on a yearly basis throughout the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that is a capital reserve fund, but...
It's a mix.
Recurring fund.
Yeah.
Recurring spend.
And, and with the, the, uh, infrastructure monies that may or may not be coming down,
Yeah.
um, some of these could get pulled in, potentially.
Yes.
And so, I, I wouldn't wanna, just because they're out at four years, I wouldn't wanna make them less important.
I'd agree, yeah. If we could do them sooner, we would.
So, I think leaving them the way we had them before is probably a good number.
Anybody got a motion to that effect?
I will move.
Somebody else move it. Nelson moved it.
Yeah, Nelson moved. Uh, not for the town CIP. Someone have a motion to do the rankings, numbers as we've talked about?
Nelson just did.
I just made that motion, chairman.
Thank you, I was, I had my head turned, I don't hear when I do that.
Do a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. There's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I want to abstain.
Four, zero, one. Thank you. Okay, over to our MVD friends, who provided us their list. So, I would say, um, since we don't have a prior year to compare to, the things that are listed either in ongoing fiscal year twenty-one or twenty-two, don't require any vote.
Correct.
Right.
Um, the fiscal year... What's that?
Twenty-two is...
Twenty-two is our current fiscal year.
Yeah, that's the year we're in.
So, that's already in action.
Fiscal year concluding twenty-two, it'll be concluding June thirtieth, twenty-two.
Okay. So, the pink peach color item...
Would be next year.
Next year.
Is next year, we should vote on the ones of those that aren't TVDs.
To the, yeah. If it has a number and it's in the peach column or to the right, we should have a priority on it.
Okay. With that in mind, those are, they're not numbered. So, the first item is a land acquisition for a well site in twenty-four. That one needs a vote? What does everybody think of that? I think that that should be relatively a high priority.
Yeah.
They've needed that for a long time, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to call that even a one. What are you guys' thoughts?
What does a one mean?
A one would be urgent, cannot be delayed, needed immediately for health and safety. If it was in the current bud, if it was in the pink, or the salmon column, I would agree completely. But if it's not in that column, it's hard to make it a one.
It's hard to make it a one, yeah, I'd agree. Two, two is what it should be.
Just for the well site?
What's that?
You're on land.
For the first.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the first one, and I guess the second one kinda goes with that stuff. Um, at the same time, whether they've chosen to put it in different years, and sometimes they investigate a site, it doesn't work out, and all those kinds of things, it's been at least a decade that acquiring new well sites needed to be your top priority.
Yes.
And I don't know how to more clearly send a message than to hang a one on it. I mean, not that it's gonna, not to change their plan at all.
Just the wording was got me. I'll, I'll make it a one if you, I mean, I couldn't go along with one.
So, let's number these line items. So, the first one, line item is land, the second one's potential new well site development, that's two. Uh, we'll, we'll label both of those as priority one.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, new well site installation either in Mitchell Woods or Wilson Hill Road is a T, you know, it's a two-point-eight-million-dollar adventure in two thousand and twenty-five. Thoughts?
Based on what you've done for the other two, I say you make it a one.
What's that?
Oh, the two-point-eight million?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm happy with that being a nice high one as well.
So, the Wilson Hill area is at a super, super early stage. Mitchell Woods is...
Closer.
Were almost like right there.
Oh, yeah, they've actually drilled a test well at Mitchell Woods.
Oh, it's, it's, it's almost ready to be...
Yeah, yeah. But Wilson Hill Road, they don't even own the land.
We just started talking about that. It's the owner that currently brought us up to it.
One?
One.
One I'm hearing, okay. Next one would be artificial recharge at well four and five?
To be determined. I mean, they, they didn't give us any information.
No, that one, they have a four-point-nine-million-dollar, I, I've skipped down.
Oh.
All the way to the artificial, artificial recharge, which is four-point-nine million in FY twenty-five.
I think it's an interesting concept to build essentially a pond out of river water, and then pipe it out from underground underneath it.
It's exactly, so what it does, it, it avoids the need for a surface water, like cleaning plant, like patchwork.
Yeah, it's using infiltration as a treatment, a pre-treatment.
So, it's pretty much causing, causing rainfall, but putting water on the ground, letting it percolate, and pulling it right back up.
Yeah.
That's it.
Um, you know, if that works as a way to...
Does that work with ground over there in the area of four and five, with the PFAS all over and everything?
I mean, it should, if those are both treated wells, we haven't had to change them yet, so...
And the river won't have PFAS in it, or at least not.
I mean, it...
Not at the same level, so...
It will pick it up going through the dirt, but I mean...
But you're gonna filter it back out again anyway.
Two or three?
Um, I think it's a two.
Two.
Two works.
Okay, skipping down several lines to the well level monitoring. That was the one that sounded a lot like operation stuff to me.
Yeah.
Well, it is at ten K, but the three-hundred K is to get equipment to, to put that in there. I mean, you're not gonna do operations at three-hundred.
No, that's true, although Ron indicated, and I made a note that he said that was gonna come off of those years. I guess that's because they haven't figured out what they're gonna do yet.
That's the way I read it as well.
And if that is the case, that's okay, but that's, you know, three or four.
That almost sounds like deferible then, yeah.
Yeah.
Four.
Yeah, call that one four. Um, skipping down to the next dollar line item is the fifteen thousand dollars every other year for rate updates.
That doesn't sound like capital improvement.
Nope, you actually skipped Belmont Booster.
Fifty thousand.
Uh, Belmont Booster, okay. Um, fifty thousand in the coming year. I don't know if I understood how important that was from his presentation. Paul, is there any light that you can shed on what that's about?
My understanding is that they have to go out there and check that station every day. Yeah, there's no, um...
No remote way of checking things there.